All right. Thank you very much. Welcome, everybody. It is 9:01 a.m., Tuesday, August 24th, 2021. This is the general meeting for the Lake County Board of Supervisors. We are going to start with a moment of silence. And does anyone else have a moment of silence? I know I have one prepared. Supervisor Piska and also C.A.O. Hutchinson. Let's go ahead and start with Supervisor Piska.
Chair Sabatier.
Wait, wait, wait. We're getting in echo. Are we good on sound? Okay.
Although...
Sam, I believe you said we were ready to roll. All right. Thank you very much. Welcome, everybody. It is 9:01 a.m., Tuesday, August 24th, 2021. This is the general meeting for the Lake County Board of Supervisors. We are going to start with a moment of silence. And does anyone else have a moment of silence? I know I have one prepared.
It's almost as if Peg TV is playing live. Because I know Peg TV usually has that 15, 20 second delay.
Are we good on sound? Okay. Sam, I believe you said we were ready to roll. All right. Thank you very much. Welcome, everybody. It is 9:01 a.m., Tuesday, August 24th, 2021.
Oh, no, there's three voices.
For the Lake County Board of Supervisors. I think we're going to have to fix this before we continue. So we're going to take a five-minute break. And I apologize for the technical difficulty. Or the time warp that I have brought you to. Because I know Peg TV usually has that 15, 20... Are we on all the platforms at this moment in time, Sam?
No, we have two more to go.
Okay. Well, it's 9:21. We will go back to restarting our meeting with a moment of silence. I apologize for not starting our meeting with that due to the urgency of Item 4.1. So I would like for us to consider the extra Item 4.1, A. Consideration of extra agenda item, and B. Consideration of ratification of a local health emergency by the Lake County Health Officer for the Cache Fire. And this is put on our agenda by C.A.O. Hutchinson. So if you can please identify the reasons for taking this up as an extra item.
So thanks, Mr. Chair. This is on your agenda as an extra item because we were advised in a meeting with the State Director of Cal OES that had been coordinated by Senator McGuire and Assembly Member Aguirre Curry last Friday that the county needed to... that the public health officer needed to make this declaration so that DTSC could be sent to the city of Clear Lake to conduct the toxic debris sweep that is necessary in the burn area. And so with that, that is the reason that is an extra item. It came up after the posting of the agenda.
Perfect. Is there a motion to approve this as an extra item?
Mr. Chair, would you approve the extra item?
Second.
So we have a motion from Supervisor Scott, second by Supervisor Piska. Roll call, please. Johanna?
Okay. Supervisor Simon?
At this moment Supervisor Simon is absent.
Oh, okay. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Piska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
And so I'd like to take this up, this item, right now. And so consideration of ratification of local health emergency by the Lake County Health Officer for the Cache Fire. And I know that we do have Dr. Pace here with us if he would like to speak on this item.
Hi. Good morning. Gary Pace, interim Public Health Officer for the county. And yeah, this is... So the Cache Fire was last week. And because of the concerns about all the ash and the toxins from the burning of the homes and of the different items, you know, propane tanks and different things like that, we are wanting to get this cleaned up as soon as possible so that prevent anything from getting into the watershed. And the state is willing to come out tomorrow to start doing it if we're kind of going through the proper steps of declaring an emergency. And I feel that this is a public health emergency because of the concern about toxins getting into the waterways. And so I strongly encourage you all to ratify that proclamation.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any comments from supervisors or questions? Sheriff, did you have anything to add to this?
I don't know if I'll answer any questions if any questions come up.
Okay. Thank you very much. And just again for an update, it does appear that they are here for 10 a.m. to meet with staff from the county and the city to review. So we appreciate Cal OES's expediting of this process. So let's open up for the public. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? And seeing none again in the Zoom room. I believe you can hear me. Obviously, Johanna is hearing me. So yes, you can hear me. Raise your hand in the Zoom room if you wish to speak on this item. And let's bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the ratification of the proclamation of a local health emergency by the Lake County Health Officer for the Cache Creek Fire... or Cache Fire.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott, second by Supervisor Piska. Roll call, please. Johanna?
Okay. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Piska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now I'm going to check in again with our technical team. Are we good to continue on with our meeting, Sam?
Yes, Chair Sabatier. We're still trying to connect to Facebook. Everything else is working properly.
So on Zoom, we're good. In the chamber, we're good. And that's the only things, I believe, that we have identified on our agenda. So we are following protocol. Perfect. Let's go back to where we started. Sorry for changing the atmosphere for that. But that was an urgent item to get to. So let's go back to a moment of silence. I believe we had a few. And so if we can start with Supervisor Piska again.
So although they haven't been officially recorded, we've had some deaths this week from COVID-19. We have families that have lost loved ones. And it's... I hope that we can think of them in our moment of silence and offer them our support.
Thank you very much. C.A.O. Hutchinson, I believe you had one as well?
I did. I just want to honor the memory of Phyllis Woodworth, the longtime secretary here in our Human Resources office, passed away late last week.
Thank you for that. And so I prepared a quick little message here that I'm going to read. I'll try to be very brief. But it's important for me to read this. "At a time where great hardship has been given to those that have unfortunately lived in the path of the Cache Fire, we need all of us to focus on the victims and how best to provide respite to their nightmares. This could only be done through collaboration. I want to speak for a moment about where our focus should be, who are the victims. Daniel, Sue, and Adolfo, folks that I've met through this ordeal and at the evacuation center, came real close to losing their homes. They grabbed three out of their four dogs and finally yesterday were able to go home and joyously found their lost dog, who got away during the fire. Their home was lucky, unlike 56 others. It is directly across the street from the water system at the Cache Creek Mobile Home Park that is completely destroyed. They ran out with what they could without knowing if their home would still be there. They have a long road ahead of recovering from that harrowing experience. And the changing environment around them constantly reminds them of the tragedy that occurred. While they may not have... while they may have been saved from a huge loss, they still need our support." Then there's folks like Lorraine. She took her two cats with her and drove out just in time. But unfortunately for her, she has no home to go back to. It appears my conversations with Lorraine that she is alone with only what is in her truck. And she is worried about what the next day will be like, with hopes that it will be better. She's very sweet when you talk to her. But in my opinion, it feels like a front because I feel that she's scared. She needs our support. I've seen a family of three generations with no home to go back to. Many close connections to those who were impacted, from a council member's son-in-law's parents to the sister of a prominent Clear Lake business owner, a water district's manager's mother. Our friends, our families, our neighbors. All lost homes with lives uprooted and changed forever. That is and always should be our focus, the victims of the Cache Fire. And we need to reset and ensure that we continue moving forward with that focus. Today's moment of silence is to the Lorraines of this tragedy and all the others who were devastated by the tragic Cache Fire. We will not let you down or be forgotten. Together, we will lead with purpose. And together, we will lead and serve." So please rise for a moment. Supervisor Scott?
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we also have another extra item on our agenda, 4.2, consideration of extra agenda item, and B. Consideration of agreement with OptumServe Mobile Vaccination Van and Team. At this moment in time, I would like to start off with at least the consideration of the item. And then we'll go ahead and bring this item in when it's appropriate, if this can be introduced. And I believe we have Director Pomeroy on the Zoom room with us.
Good morning, Chair Sabatier and supervisors. Thank you for taking the time to listen to this request for an extra item. This extra item is being submitted as the item came to my attention subsequent to the posting of the current agenda. And there is a need to take action before the next agenda. Lake County Health Services has been working with the state vaccination team to acquire a mobile vaccination team to be assigned to Lake County. As of the end of this week, our Optum site that we do have will no longer be available to us as a brick-and-mortar site. And the response team has determined that there is a higher need for a mobile site that can go and move around the county to different locations to better serve our community.
And Director Pomeroy, I'm going to interrupt you. I'd love to get into the meat of this agenda item. But at this moment in time, if we can just quickly get to the reasons for why this is an extra item, so we can go ahead and place it as an agenda item so we can discuss a little further.
No, I'm sorry. I don't do extra items.
No worries.
I think this is my first one ever, so I apologize. So Friday afternoon, we were notified by the state that they had approved our request for a mobile vaccination van and team in order to get them here by next week, Monday, which would be before our next agenda item so that they will be present all four days at the fair to get vaccinations.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Any questions from the board, comments, or any action? At this moment, we have to put it on the agenda in order to have public comment.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair, I move to approve the extra item 4.2.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott, second by Supervisor Piska. Roll call, please. Johanna?
Okay. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Piska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Just as a point of clarification, the public's also entitled to comment as to whether they think an extra is appropriate.
So she said that I needed to open public comment. My mistake. So let's go ahead and make sure open public comment. Are there any questions regarding adding this item as an extra item? Not specifically about the item yet, but any questions about adding it? Phone 4627 is your hand up for public comment on this. I apologize, Ms. Grant. Thank you very much.
Yes. Good morning. This is Tom Slate. And I just wanted to raise something, an issue I've raised before.
Hold on, hold on. Is this regarding adding an extra item to our agenda?
No. And in fact, no, I do stand corrected on that. So I'll call in later. Thank you.
Please put your hand up when the agenda item you want to speak on comes through. All right. So let's go. We already did the vote. Thank you very much for clarifying for the public comment. Let's go ahead and move on. We'll discuss that further at a later time. Now, to go over the consent agenda, I would like to pull Item 5.1 and 5.4. Are there any other items that board members or staff wish to pull? Okay. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to pull an item from our consented agenda to discuss further? Raise your hand if you're in the Zoom room by clicking the bottom button that says Raise Hand. Or if you're dialing through the telephone, dial *9 and you will raise your hand. All right. Bringing it back for action on the others not pulled.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve consent agenda items 5.2, 5.3, 5.5 through 5.10.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Crandall, a second by Supervisor Piska. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Piska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll take up those other two items at a later time. I want to make sure and respect the timed items. So our 9:06 a.m. item, consideration of update on COVID-19. And I know that Dr. Pace is here with us.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chair. And good morning to the board. Thank you for having me again to talk about a COVID update. Again, I'm kind of helping out here as interim health officer until permanent replacement can be found. And so Sarah is not here, is not available today. So I'm going to go ahead and just go through her slides quickly. But basically, the situation is stabilizing. And we're optimistic that things are going in the right direction. So we can go to the first slide there. Thank you. So this is a... On the left side is the total test performed, just to show that we are seeing a little bit of a drop in testing. We're the dark line. The state is the lighter gray line on top. But we can see that we're basically following what's happening statewide in terms of a slightly fewer number of tests being performed. And then on the... The one on the right is the test positivity rate. We're the dark line, which is on the top, still quite high, but is improved from before. And as we know that when the test positivity is high, we tend to see an increase in cases and a lag time with increase in cases and then a lag time with increase in hospitalizations over time. But so now this does seem to be dropping some. Next slide, please. This is the total confirmed cases. Again, the dark line is the county. The lighter gray line below is the state. And we can see that that's dropping. Next one, please. So this is a really interesting one. This is the Lake County data on vaccinated versus unvaccinated cases in the county from the first two weeks of August. So we could... The bluer one on the left is not fully vaccinated that have become cases. And the one on the right, the dark one, is the fully vaccinated people that have turned positive. So there's a sevenfold reduction in your chances of becoming positive for COVID from the testing that's being done in Lake County if you're vaccinated. So if you're vaccinated, you have seven times less chance of getting COVID. Next slide, please. So this is the Epi curve that we show every week. And you can see on the right side that things are starting to drop and the number of cases is improving. And this is Lake County. Next slide, please. This is hospitalizations on the left. This is Lake County hospitalizations. Looks like it's starting to flatten. And the ICU is starting to drop. So this is what we're seeing. The hospitals have been quite full recently. And we've been having some trouble with transport out. But this is... The pressure seems to be relaxing some. So things are starting to improve. Next slide, please. This is the deaths. And so the one on the left is from the state. Unfortunately, we've had now... Three folks have passed away over the weekend from COVID. And that hasn't been reflected in the state data yet. So... But yeah, so we're really sad to have that situation come up. But that's what's happened over the weekend. Next slide, please. This is the graph of the people getting first doses. So you know, it's a way of charting, are we seeing an increase in new vaccinations or a decrease? And this has dropped a little bit in the last week or so. Next slide, please. So this is an interesting slide. We now have a total of over 30,000 people in the county that have been fully vaccinated. So this is quite an accomplishment. We're still at 55% of folks 12 and older that are fully vaccinated. But this is now 30,000. So that's 30,000... Well, 60,000 for essentially doses that have been given now since the vaccine became available. So this is pretty exciting that we've gotten this far. And but it still means that 45% of the people that are eligible are not fully vaccinated. And we want to try to increase that number. Next slide, please. Is that it? Okay. Thank you. So I think the most important thing is to just acknowledge that the vaccine continues to be very protective against serious disease and death. The... We have seen in the hospitals, in our local hospitals, we're not actually able to completely track everybody to get good data on the vaccinated people that are in the hospital. But when we've taken a couple snapshots at different times, it's pretty clear that the vast majority of folks that are in the hospital are not back... For COVID, that are not vaccinated. We now... There's a situation statewide where they're calling it load leveling, where hospitals that are under serious pressure are able to transfer patients to other hospitals in the area that have some vacancies. And we, as of last night, we were... It looked like we were going to be taking two of them from Del Norte. So because they're in a very difficult situation up there. And so I'm not sure if those folks came in or not, but that was the plan last night. So we'll have to sort of keep track of that data as well. But just to be aware, the state has shifted their rules now to make sure that the places that are getting most heavily impacted have an ability to depressurize the hospitals. And yeah, really sad to see these folks pass away this weekend. And so I want to just acknowledge that. And I appreciate Supervisor Piska mentioning that earlier and everything because it hits us all hard when that happens with folks that we know. There is an outbreak in the jail right now. Seven staff are positive, 17 inmates. And 52 inmates are quarantined. So this is like a quarter of the jail that is being impacted. The correctional officers are working with us really closely. And they're taking the proper spread, the proper steps to minimize spread. But you know, as you can imagine, the jail is a very challenging place with so many folks in there. And ventilation isn't the greatest. And everybody's kind of close together. So we're doing what we can to try to slow the spread there. But it's definitely an issue. So I want to talk a little bit about vaccines now. Pfizer yesterday was approved by the FDA. So it's fully approved now. It's no longer under the emergency use authorization. And this will, you know... So this should reassure people a little bit more, folks that have been reluctant because of the incomplete authorization. That is now changed for Pfizer. And Moderna, we expect that to be coming down the road in the near future. Also, boosters have been approved for the folks that are immunocompromised. And the third shot is being recommended now for folks that have been fully vaccinated starting eight months after the second dose. So some of the data has come out showing that there's been a decrease in immunity starting around eight months. And so we, you know, this... We haven't operationalized this yet. The details aren't out yet. But it looks like that's going to be what the recommendation is going to be in the near future. So as Denise was mentioning, state support for the Optum Serve fixed sites is ending. And they're here through the end of this week. The state... We've been asking the state for some help to continue going. And they will give us this mobile team. But they're not going to pay for it at this point. So Denise is going to come forward and ask for the funding through the county from the CARES funds. We do really want to thank everyone that has helped with the Optum Serve fixed sites over the last couple months, both the testing and the vaccine sites. So it's been a... It's been a really good collaborative effort with some of our county partners. And we really appreciate that, being able to continue after we decreased and ended the mass vaccination sites. So there's a plan to set up a vaccine site at one of the entrances of the fair. We're... A lot of the details are still getting worked out. But we're hoping to get it set up so that folks that need vaccination can hopefully get one. And we're working on getting a free entrance for those folks. So the hours and the specifics are still being worked out. And we're getting some help with some local partners as well to do the vaccines. But this is part of the way to try to get vaccines out to where people are at. And Supervisor Sabatier and the supervisors have been really encouraging us to go this way. And it seems like a good idea. So there is a special event on Thursday in Kelseyville that's been put together with the help of some partners, Adventist Health, LCOE. And there's some farmworker allies from Sonoma County that have helped us put together this event in Kelseyville Thursday afternoon from 3:00 to 6:00. And there will be information on our website. It's for farmworkers as a target, but it's open to everybody. So if people want to come and get it there, that's the way to do that. Want to talk a little bit about testing? The... Again, the state support for the Optum Sites is over. So they are giving us a capability of doing some testing around the lake, kind of at various sites around the lake. We're still working out those details. So next week, we'll be sort of ramping it up. We're not sure exactly what the details will be. So we'll be putting out the schedule for that. But just to let people know, even though the support for the current setup is over as of the end of this week, we are going to have testing and we are going to continue doing vaccination sites. And we're just, you know, they just cut us off last week. So we're kind of in the process of scrambling to get all that in place. Contact tracing, case investigation. We are starting, really shifting our energies away from that now. We just don't have the staff to continue doing all the different pieces. And it seems like where we're going to get the most impact in preventing the spread of future pandemics the spread of future pandemics is by working on vaccines. So we are, there is some state staff helping us with contact tracing, case investigation, but the focus here is going to be for folks, if they're symptomatic or they're in close contact, to go get tested. If you are positive, you can get some information on how to isolate and quarantine and to contact your, uh, the people you've been in touch with, uh, so that we can try to stop the spread. But we're going to have to really ask the community to sort of step up and do that themselves. We've been doing this for a year and a half now, and I think most folks know what needs to happen. We'll have a phone line that people can get their questions answered, but we're not going to be able to be calling everybody up now that's a positive case. Um, the schools are a really important piece of this, and I think we're going to be talking about this more and more going forward. Uh, you know, right now, the 12 to 17-year-old group is about 80% of them are not vaccinated. And um, in the 18 to 49-year-old group, which is the parents of school-aged kids often, 55% of them are not vaccinated. So here we are, putting all these kids into the schools, and um, yet the vast majority are not vaccinated, even if they're eligible. Under 12 is not eligible at this point, but the older ones are. And we really want to try to encourage both the kids, uh, the parents of the kids and the, the school staff to get vaccinated if at all possible. You know, last year, we really had most of the schools not open for the vast majority of the year, and it's not good. And we, the best thing we can do to try to keep the schools open is to get these groups vaccinated and to have the kids wearing masks at the school. So we're going to be seeing outbreak, outbreaks. We're having some cases coming out of the schools now, and we really want to keep these schools open. So we're going to be putting more and more focus on these uh, groups to try to get the vaccine taken care of so that the schools can stay open. I think what we're going to be seeing is this surge looks like it's starting to come to some closure, and it's going to start improving here in the coming weeks. But very likely, we're going to be seeing another one in a couple of months that could be um, uh, some mutations with variants and also with people going back indoors and with flu coming. It just really looks like the fall and winter could be a real problem. And so we really want to get people vaccinated now in preparation for this next surge. So just a few more things, and then I'll be done. Um, the, I did want to address a few of the concerns that keep getting brought up in the public comments, uh, when I've been listening to the meetings the last couple of weeks. One is about ivermectin. This is a medication that's been used in veterinary medicine for quite a while. Some people feel like this, that has some activity against COVID. They did a big uh, study recently, and they found that there was no evidence that it was a, that there was a, any real improvement with it. So we are definitely not recommending using ivermectin. Um, there was some talk previously about uh, different vitamins, vitamin C, vitamin D, and all those are probably a good idea. The studies have, you know, been, we haven't really seen clear evidence that they're, they are preventive, but they're low risk, and it seems very reasonable to go ahead and try to use that if you want to. I think the main thing is not to do those things and then ignore the other recommendations of the masking and the vaccination, the things that we have evidence that really does work. These things like ivermectin and hydroxychloroquine, uh, we have evidence that they don't work. The studies have been done, and they don't seem to help. And so I would discourage people from doing that. But the things like vitamin C and vitamin D are probably a good idea. I've also seen some concerns raised about the PCR testing. And um, you know, we're using these all the time. They seem to correlate with what we're seeing with, uh, with the illnesses and with hospitalization. So I don't, I don't really think that's a, uh, it seems like more of an abstract academic kind of concern, because in real life, this is how we're identifying people that are sick and trying to prevent it from spreading and from them getting sicker. So I would, you know, I think the recommendations are, I know they've been changing some over time, because this is a new virus, and we're trying to understand it as it goes along. But I think the evidence is pretty clear that vaccine and masking is the key to it all. So again, it looks, so in conclusion here, it looks like the surge is settling down, and we're really saddened by the loss of some of our community members over the last weekend. Uh, and uh, so please support those families if you know them. And uh, there are likely to be future surges and future variants. So I think, you know, developing good habits now and getting vaccinated now is going to help us in the future. It takes, if you got vaccinated tomorrow and you got the second one three to four weeks later, it's still two weeks after that before you have full protection. So it's about six weeks from when you decide to get going. The, um, I think we're going to really start putting a lot of focus on the schools and the, the kids and the parents of school-aged kids, encouraging them to get vaccinated. So um, you know, I, I just, the messaging is probably going to be coming out. We're going to be trying to work with the schools to see what we can do about that. I think also we need to kind of work with the local nursing homes and the healthcare facilities to encourage them to get their uh, staff as fully vaccinated as possible, because I think there's a little bit of work we can do there to get, because those folks are particularly vulnerable in getting it and spreading it. So, and the last thing is just that if you have symptoms or are in close contact, get tested and isolate and quarantine and let the people know that you've been in contact with. This is how we're going to slow the spread of the pandemic is by, when people do get it, to be, to take themselves out of circulation. This Delta variant is very, very contagious, and um, we're, you know, we're just seeing how some parts around the country are getting really heavily impacted. I think we have now, um, you know, we've been feeling it the last month or so, and again, but it's, looks like we're probably going to be coming out of this surge in the near future. So that's all from me now. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Are there any questions from the board? Supervisor Pyska?
Thank you, Dr. Pace, for that update. Um, I, I have a couple of questions. I guess, you know, a lot of people have been waiting for the Pfizer approval, and just so it's really clear to everyone, where are the opportunities to, to receive that vaccination throughout the county?
Yeah, thanks for asking that. So um, at this point, you can go through your medical providers. Most of the medical community is providing vaccines. And uh, the other main place to get it is through the pharmacies. Um, most of the pharmacies are giving them, we've, actually, this week, we called around all of them just to see what's the availability. Are people able to get appointments? And um, you know, most of them that are giving them said they have walk-in capacity. People can just walk in and say they want it, and they can get it within 15, 20 minutes. And nobody's at capacity right now. So there is availability around the county. The health department now is doing a few clinics, uh, but I think, you know, we're going to be probably shifting our focus now. We do have this farm worker event on Thursday afternoon in Kelseyville. So you know, there's different places around. You can go on the website and look, but I think the easiest way to do it is either go through your provider or through the local pharmacies right now. The, uh, that will change, because we were doing them at the OptumServe sites, but now that's going to be eliminated. And uh, depending on how things go with the discussion today, later on the day about the funding for the mobile unit, we may have other sites set up around the lake at different places, um, different days of the week to offer them that way as well. But um, yeah, there's going to be the Pfizer approval, so I think that's going to increase demand. And then also, the third booster is going to start coming online here in the next month or so, so that, that will be another thing. But I think it's really, really important for the folks that are not vaccinated at this point, to anybody who's open to thinking about it, to get your questions answered and go get it done for this next surge that will probably be coming in a few months.
And when do we think the approval is going to come for the Pfizer, for the 12 to 17-year-olds?
Yeah, Pfizer is already approved for 12 to 17-year-olds.
Oh, the, okay. I thought, I thought it was just for 17 or 18 above. Okay, well, that's.
Oh, no, no, no. Yeah, so I'm glad that you asked that, if that's the confusion. 12 and above can get the Pfizer vaccine right now. So if you have a teenage kid and you're interested in getting it, we just need to get you hooked up at one of the sites that offers the Pfizer vaccine and they can get it.
Right. Um, so we're kind of in this mid, middle place with the testing that you were talking about with losing the OptumServe. And I know that the messaging is going to be coming out with, um, where people can get tested. But if somebody had to get tested today or tomorrow, where would they go?
Today and tomorrow, it's the same. The, the current sites are working through the rest of the week. So they can go to the OptumServe sites just as we've been doing it before. And then starting next week, we're going to start this new, uh, new schedule. Denise, did you want to mention what the situation was?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Pace. I just want to clarify, um, the state is still paying for OptumServe to do testing. They're just switching their model a little. Instead of the brick and mortar, it's going to be a mobile mini, mini bus and team. So we are working on the logistics with them on the locations around the lake. They will be working five days a week, and each day will be in, like, in a different district. So um, the logistics will, as soon as we have those logistics worked out, you know, we'll send out messaging.
Great. Um, so my, my last question is more of a concern. We have the fair starting next week, and it, it looks like the, the Del Norte Fair contributed to the surge that that county is facing. And um, I'm just wondering what the safety measures are planned for the fair so that we don't get back into a bad situation with our surge?
I have not spoken with the fair about the safety measures, so I don't know. Denise or Carolyn, do you know anything, any conversations?
CEO Hutchinson?
Yes, I actually spoke to the CEO of the fair yesterday about this, and, and she told me that they're taking a number of precautionary measures. I asked her if she could be present today, but they're very, very busy getting the fair ready to go, so she couldn't be present. But she explained that they would have signage up at all gates, reminding people of the need to mask and social distance. She said that they had um, a, a number of added hand washing stations, and they had hand sanitizer placed, sprinkled all over the fairgrounds. They said one of the wineries had donated some wine barrels, and they had set up stations where people could sanitize their hands and, and things. So they've done quite a bit more than, than is usual to keep people safe.
I think the number one thing that I would recommend for folks, especially if you're unvaccinated, is to wear masks if you're around many people out there. Even though, certainly better outdoors, but this, this Delta variant is so contagious that um, if you're around many people, even outdoors, especially if the air is stagnant, you should wear a mask.
Is there a mask requirement for an event that large?
Not outdoors, uh, at this point, that I'm aware of.
Okay.
That doesn't mean it's not a good idea.
Supervisor Scott?
I just wanted to add, I know we were talking about our children 12 and up are eligible to be vaccinated, and we have a really low percentage of children that age to vaccinate it. And just for an added incentive, I know Lakeport Unified School District, if your child has a close contact with something that, somebody that has COVID, and they have no symptoms, and they're fully vaccinated, they can continue to go to school. So for me, that's an added incentive that my children, they're going to have close contacts going back to school, but if they're fully vaccinated, they can stay in school and just watch, have the parents watch the symptoms. So just a good idea to get your children vaccinated if they're eligible, so they can continue to go to school.
Thank you for that. Any further comments? So I, I did want to just make a clarification, just because I know a lot of people listen to what we are talking about, and there's a lot of changes that happened, especially changes happened yesterday. Uh, the approval of the FDA was for 16 and up for the Pfizer, but it is available still through the emergency approval for 12 and up. And so at this moment in time, the full completed approval by the FDA is for the 16-plus, and they are working on getting the, uh, the Moderna, which I believe that they say would be in four or five weeks possibly, uh, and then of course, going to the 12 and up as well. Also, um, I, I do want to check in on that additional vaccine, and I think there's some confusion. Uh, there's the additional dose for those that are immunocompromised, and then there's also the conversation about the booster. And I think those two are easily intertwined as one and the same. And I, the booster right now is being discussed about being available in fall for those that are eight months past their second shot to possibly re-enhance the protection that the original vaccination afforded. And I'm looking at the CDC website for the immunocompromised, uh, and it says that, um, again, it's for the specific few that are very immunocompromised, and it says here, 28 days after your second vaccine has been completed. Uh, so I just want to make sure that we have the correct information, so that those that are reaching out, I've had a few people reach out to me, uh, that, that I've told to reach out to their primary care providers, um, to make sure that when we get contact, that we provide the information on what is possible and what is not available, uh, depending on their status. And I, it's, it's getting difficult, because there's multiple varieties of vaccines, um, there's different varieties of status of people, uh, on where they are on the vaccination, where they are in their health status. Uh, so I think there's just a lot of moving parts and information. But if we can make sure that we have, uh, that information and possibly be able to put that on our website as well, to help our public find out where they can, what their, what their status is and what they can do to enhance their protection, I think that would be great. For, I opened it up for the public, just checking in again. All right, let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Anybody in the boardroom wish to speak on this item? Please go ahead and come to the microphone, and you have three minutes.
My question is really simple. If you're vaccinated, what is it that you're receiving? Why do we still have to wear masks?
So at this moment in time, our hospitals are absolutely overwhelmed, which means that if, beyond COVID, if you have a heart attack, if you have a kidney failure, if you have any other type of ailment, there is less probability of you getting the correct care at a hospital right now because of the amount of people that are in our hospitals.
But if we're vaccinated, fully vaccinated, what is it that we're getting?
We're helping the people around us. That is, that is what is happening. Because the virus can still come to you and me, we're both vaccinated, it would seem.
We can carry the virus?
Yes. Is that correct, Doctor? And Dr. Pace, if you want to respond, I'm sorry if I'm responding for you.
Right. Uh, no, this is a good question, because uh, four to six weeks ago, we thought it was very unlikely that vaccinated people could get the virus and spread it. And now we're seeing, we're learning more and more that people that are vaccinated can get the virus and can spread it. But that's where that, um, that one slide that I showed, where people are seven times more likely to get infected if they're unvaccinated than if they're vaccinated. So you can still get infected, and you can still spread it, but it's much less risk that you're going to get infected if you're vaccinated versus unvaccinated. And I think the main thing is, is the biggest advantage of getting vaccinated is it's very unlikely that you're going to end up in the hospital or die from the COVID if you're vaccinated. Very, it's not impossible, and usually the folks that get in the hospital or end up dying that have been vaccinated are older folks with a, you know, not as vibrant immune systems or folks that are immunocompromised from other kinds of issues. So your question is, is why do I need to wear a mask if I'm vaccinated? It's mainly to slow the spread around the community, because you can get infected, you can be contagious, and if we can slow the spread through the community, we're a lot better off.
And the second part of my question, will there be a day when we don't have to wear masks?
I sure hope so.
Yeah, we all hope so, for sure. I think, you know, I think most likely what we're going to be seeing is that this will become a, a, kind of a chronic illness, sort of like the cold. Once our immune systems get used to it, once we kind of are, are become acclimated to it, it'll be more like an annual flu or something like that, where we are dealing with it in a different way. But at this point, because it's so new to our immune systems, a certain percentage of the population just gets overwhelmed and asks them to hospital or is dying. And so we need to take these measures to try to protect the population.
Thank you for your question, sir. Real quick, I'm going to make a pause. We have a hand up from Johanna.
Can I get the name of the, um, service? If he could come up and.
Oh, what was your name, sir?
Steve Estrada.
Steve Estrada. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the boardroom have questions? Please give us your name in three minutes.
Joan Moss. I'd like to know, Dr. Pace, if you are an interim health officer or a health officer? It wasn't made clear. And secondly, I want to know where people can go to get tested for COVID. Thank you.
Thank you for your questions. Dr. Pace?
Um, well, I'm, I'm not working full-time like I was before. I had left and been kind of helping out, but we haven't been able to find a replacement yet. So I'm basically working some here and other places as well. So it's a kind of, um, uh, helping as best I can during this time. Uh, the question about the testing is what we were mentioning before, that for this week, it's still the same setup as before. There's the OptumServe sites through your primary care provider, through some of the pharmacies. Uh, starting next week, that'll be shifting a little bit with a, a mobile testing site going around the county, still with your providers, still with the pharmacies. Uh, there are home tests available now that you can get. You can get stuff, uh, you know, so there's a variety of ways to do it. Um, if that's a concern, if people are having trouble finding where to get tested, please let us know at the Milwaukee line, and we'll try to make it more transparent.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions in the boardroom on this item? All right, let's go to the Zoom room, phone 2689, if we can unmute. Again, please provide your name, and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Christina Robertson. Can you hear me well?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Um, well, I just wanted to say a couple of things, and thank you for hearing me. Um, well, some people, yeah. Some people have said ivermectin is helpful in stages, and that's important, that early stage part. that's important, that early stage part. But these people were not just some people, they were highly respected and educated indeed. So that's one thing that I just want to point out. And there are people who have had success treating their patients. There's other doctors who have had success with already approved and known drugs instead of experimental vaccines. And then another thing I want to say is, as far as studies go, there's been quite a few studies on ivermectin, and there's a website, c19ivermectin.com. Seventy-one of them have been peer reviewed. Now, I haven't read all these studies, of course, and don't know what the findings were, but I just wanted to point that out if anybody has that kind of inclination to look. But it does look like there's been improvements, that there is evidence of improvement through these studies, just glancing at it lightly, like I did. And then another thing that I want to say, so I had a college professor who said studies are, are, you know, you can get a statistic to prove or disprove just about anything you, you want to prove or disprove, but you know, who pays for the study? How many people are included in the study? There's lots of variables when you want to look at a study to prove something. And then the other point I want to make is, what's bothering me the most, okay, if you want to get a vaccine, get one. I don't want one. I don't want to put that in my body, and I'm healthy, and I, I just don't want to do that. So I believe I should have a choice, and people are not giving, being given choices right now. And, you know, the thought that there's a, a protocol, a template in place, which I brought this up last week on the CDC.gov website, a template for green, quote, green camps, places to put unvaccinated people, people who have not complied with the wishes of others. This bothers me, this bothers me a lot, and I know it bothers other people. Okay, someone said, someone on the board said, well, you know, just because
Your three minutes are up if you can give us your final statement.
Yes, just because it's on the CDC website doesn't mean they're going to put it in place, but it bothers me that it's there and writing anyway, already, that they've thought about it. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Julia Bono.
Hello, can you hear me, Board?
If you can maybe speak either a little louder, a little closer to your microphone.
Okay, trying to do so now, is that approved?
Perfect, perfect.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Board. My name is Julia Bono, and I have a scientific background that qualifies me to perform and understand scientific research. First of all, I wish to address some potentially harmful misinformation shared by Dr. Gary Pace twice in this meeting, as well as once by a board member. In fact, the FDA did not remove the Emergency Use Authorization, or EUA, for the Pfizer vaccine, as was then stated. Instead, the FDA simply extended the EUA period, which means that this vaccine is still in the experimental stage and should not be represented as safe and effective. That matter was also misrepresented to the public in the media, most notably in the New York Times article. My point is evidenced by the FDA's own official documentation published on its website. I will send a board, a link to the board of the official FDA document, the Garian media outlets like the New York Times and Mr. Zemver, so they can review it themselves. For others, I will quote the fourth paragraph in the FDA document, which states, "On August 23, 21, 2021, having concluded that revising this EUA is appropriate to protect the public health or safety under Section 564G2 of the Act, FDA is reissuing the August 12, 21 Letter of Authorization in its entirety with revisions incorporated to clarify that the EUA will remain in place for the Pfizer BioNTech COVID-19 vaccine for the previously authorized indication and uses, and to authorize use of the Omir Nazi COVID-19 vaccine mRNA under this EUA for certain uses that are not included in the approved BLA." So that is clear evidence that we are being, facts are being misrepresented to the board. To avoid the spread of such serious misrepresentations and any official actions taken based upon them, I would respectfully suggest that any individuals who are asked to speak in an official capacity, please check their facts with original official sources before sharing it before the board and its audience. Secondly, a recent study suggests that those consuming a plant-based diet are five times less likely than those consuming a low-carb, high-protein diet typical of heavy animal product consumers to suffer moderate to severe COVID-19 symptoms. I provided the board with a link to the most recent version of that paper. Basically, I hear a lot of official support for it and even pressure to employ vaccination as a preventative measure for serious COVID-19 symptoms, despite the known health risks that include the life-threatening blood clots my own sister-in-law suffered shortly after taking the Moderna vaccine, and which was reported by her doctors to the CDC's VAERS database. I am therefore wondering what the county and the Board of Supervisors are doing to promote healthier plant-based diets among its residents that have a similar COVID-19 prevention profile and are notably safer to implement than vaccines. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Ahava Rose. Again, please give us your name, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning, Board. Ahava Rose from Middletown. Dr. Pace, my father is an NYU graduate, general vascular surgeon who also participates in wounded VR care. He graduated from Princeton University in '81 and has written for several medical journals. He's also the great-grandson of Holocaust refugees from Poland and Odessa. Could you explain to me in your own words your understanding of the Nuremberg Code and the ethical medical standards established worldwide?
Let's move on with the comment. Please.
Thank you. Does every patient that you inject know that the experimental trials aren't over until 2023? And do they know that antibody dependent enhancement is listed on the consent form as at the very last item of a laundry list of its side effects? And how are doctors to give their informed consent, if truly informed consent, if all the injection inserts are left intentionally blanked? And what is, what is the intention behind that? And has a respiratory virus ever been eradicated by a vaccine? Being that the DNA sequence of SARS-CoV-2 has genetic elements of SARS, two different kinds of coronaviruses and HIV, wouldn't you expect a treat with intracellular anti-infectives, corticosteroids, and immunomodulators and antipatload drugs since viral proliferation is met with both cytokine injury and inflammatory thrombosis? First of all, hydroxychloroquine reduces viral entry. It works as a zinc ionifier, which impairs RNA-dependent polymerase and is anti-inflammatory. There are 259 supportive trials with over 385,000 individuals showing outpatient studies that demonstrated a 50% reduction in hospitalization and death. Ivermectin also impairs nuclear viral entry and has properties against micro protein itself. Your ABC-funded study compiled late and early preventative, late and early treatments, and that was one study that you looked at, and I'm familiar with it. There are 70 apparently other trials that show a 70% reduction in mortality, and this drug has been available for 40 years and proven safe and effective. Dr. Jim Meehan is a graduated, graduated medical school, top of his class, and is licensed in 22 different states. He's an expert in scientific research and literature, and he says that the suppression of alternative treatments resulted from medical journals colluding with pharmaceutical industries to create fraudulent research studies discrediting hydroxychloroquine, and that Bill Gates is working towards one on ivermectin. There's been 100-plus years of randomized control trials showing that mask-wearing promotes bacterial pneumonia. Eighty-two percent get headaches, 23 become severe migraines with nausea and vomiting. Charts at rationalground.org show everywhere masks were mandated saw an increase in hospitalizations and death, and Fauci's emails even show him admitting that masks don't work. And lastly, Dr. Pace, why hasn't Pfizer's CEO taken the shot? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, phone 4627, your name, please, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, this is Tom Slate, and I just had a couple of concerns. What I was hearing apparently, and I'm generalizing here, the words that ivermectin and HCQ, according to studies, don't work, and those are not the exact words, I don't recall what it is. And I'm reading so much that they do work and a lot of other treatments, and it's even for really inexpensive treatments. So Dr. Pace alluded to some studies, didn't tell us what they were, but I'm wondering what, and I hate to make it personal, but that's who it was, so, and I'm operating in good faith, I'm sure he is too, but would he be able to, will he be willing to make a, a personal statement, his own thoughts, his policy, and maybe even medical advice as to whether these things, maybe people shouldn't be taking them? But anyway, his position on, I'll just say ivermectin and HCQ, his own personal thoughts on that, and his position on that, so that would be very helpful. Thank you.
So I'm, I'm going to allow Dr. Pace to respond to that, but I do want to say, Dr. Pace will not be the doctor in the ER room who makes a decision of what pharmaceutical drugs are required to care for you. He is also not your primary doctor who will go ahead and prescribe you what you need for the best care. And Dr. Pace is also not ordering hospitals to ignore any possibilities of any healthcare solutions when it comes to COVID-19. From what I understand and know, Dr. Pace is conveying information that he has been provided and researched, and trying his best to keep us up to date on what is happening with COVID-19 and how to best be cautious in the unfortunate situation that we have to deal with. And Dr. Pace, I will let you respond.
Hi, thanks. Yeah, you know, I'm a primary care doctor, I do take care of patients, and I see people a lot, and the way we make these decisions, so you're, you're kind of talking about specific patient treatment for sick people. That seems to be what a lot of the focus is here. What I've really been talking about through most of this is kind of a community-based approach to how to slow down the pandemic and how to prevent people from getting sick so that they don't end up in the hospital. But when I do take care of people, as a doc, we use this sort of pathway of looking at medical studies, clinical studies, and, you know, it's a very imperfect science. We're always trying to weigh and balance reverse benefits, and what the, most of the studies have been showing that have been done, the kind of the quality I'm used to thinking about, have not shown benefit for hydroxychloroquine or ivermectin. And there's been a lot of interest in it, there seems to be a lot of interest in the alternative community, but the, the conventional medical community has done some studies on these and have not seen the kind of effects that we need. But again, as Supervisor Sabate was saying, you know, I'm not prescribing for most of those people in the hospital that are sick. There are some things that have been shown to be useful, the monoclonal antibodies, remdesivir, some of those have, have, do so show some benefit, but it's not huge benefits, but they do help at certain stages, and then, yeah, people get sicker, it's, you're looking at steroids and other kind of immune modulators. But, so I think it's, you know, there's a way that we look at things in the medical community that tries to understand what shows benefit and what doesn't. And these things have been studied, and they don't, they, they aren't rising to the surfaces as ways to really show positive impact. But, and I think the preventative questions of a good plant-based diet and all that, I think those are great ideas. We, I would totally encourage that, but once somebody's sick, you know, then it's a different story. So I think the main thing is, is whatever people end up choosing to do or what their beliefs are about this, I just want to really encourage them to, some of these things have been proven to benefit, and I would encourage people to use those.
Thank you, Dr. Pace. Phone 6205, please provide your name, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you so much. I'll be very brief. I've been monitoring you both on Zoom by phone since the beginning of the meeting and Zoom online, and I just want to make sure that you know that on Zoom online, the meeting was not up and running until 10:13. So from 9:00 to 10:13, the meeting today has not been available online.
I'm, I'm not sure what you mean, since I've been watching the attendees, and the list has been pretty packed with people. I'm not sure if you mean Facebook, but
Yes.
Well, that's, Facebook is a, an extension of what we do, a Zoom, and in the chamber is the main place that if you want to communicate with us, you can communicate. If you just want to watch us, we will be absolutely posting the video as we always do, both on Facebook and on our website. So please continue with your comment. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the body of my comment.
Appreciate it, thank you. Next is phone 1113, and again, please provide your name, and you have three minutes.
Yes, hi, this is Dr. Will Tuttle. Okay, I'm speaking on behalf of the thousands of people here in Lake County who want to take responsibility for their own health and who don't trust the criminally corrupt pharmaceutical corporations who have immunity from any prosecution for the deaths and the injuries that they're causing us. The only immunity in this is for the pharmaceutical industry, the people who are getting vaccinated, getting sick and dying at unprecedented levels, and you are all deceiving us and are part of the criminal agenda that is happening throughout California. Amid this nonstop storm of fear porn that you and Big Pharma are spewing, I would like to say something positive, that we can take responsibility for our health and celebrate our lives on this beautiful earth and not be afraid of each other and not be afraid of germs. I wrote a book called The World Peace Diet, and it became a number one Amazon bestseller worldwide back in 2010, has been published in 17 languages. I've traveled all over the world.
If we can prohibit from shameless plugs in your public comment, that would be great.
No, I'm just saying, I'm saying that this, the basic idea in this book is that when we take responsibility for our health and treat each other with kindness and love and celebrate our lives with creativity, that we'll be healthy, that, and that fear and exploitation and violence and toxic poisons are what make people sick. I've traveled all over the world, China, Korea, South, East Asia, Middle East, Africa, Eastern Europe, Western Europe, South America, and all 50 states, spreading this message, which is a wide message getting to more and more people. And with all this traveling, I have never gotten sick in the last 50 years. I've never been to a drugstore or had a prescription drug of any kind in the last 50 years. No need for aspirin, Tylenol, Viagra, Rite Guard, Rolaid, prescription medications, all these other poisons that people are indoctrinated into buying. So if we did, if everyone did like I'm doing, and took responsibility for their health, Big Pharma would be out of business and we'd be free. The problem is that people have been brain poisoned and not taking responsibility for their health, and that's causing tremendous sickness everywhere. That's the most important thing, to realize that when we eat an organic, whole food, plant-based diet, and do our best to minimize the suffering and exploitation we cause to cows and pigs and chickens and fishes, and when we eat organically grown food without pesticides, herbicides, and fungicides, we can create a wonderful foundation for health for ourselves and for everyone. Passion and joy are the pathways to health, not the fear, cruelty, and violence promoted by the medical pharmaceutical food complex. Additionally, we are called to cultivate healthy, positive, loving relationships, as well as the mental attitude of joy and gratitude every day, and live a life inspired by a purpose to help make a better world. These are the keys to radiant health that real doctors and real supervisors would be recommending, and exercising creativity in our life. Then we're creating a beautiful life that will spread love and health to everyone. That's what we should be focusing on, not all this fear that Big Pharma is propagating. That's how you get people sick, through fear and through recycling and breathing in our own exhaust and getting hypoxia and brain damage and lung infections from these ridiculous masks, and the lockdowns and the toxic poisons in these vaccines.
And your three minutes are up. Thank you very much. Next is Amanda Brock. Again, please give us your name in case that's not the correct name, and you have three minutes.
Tyler, hello, doc.
Oh, we got a problem here. I don't know if you have two speakers going on for the meeting at the same time?
That may be a Zoom crasher, Mr. Chair.
What was that?
Might be a Zoom crasher.
Your Zoom crashed?
That may be a Zoom crasher, is what I'm saying. That may not be your real comment, I'm not sure.
Okay, let's, if it's possible to see what's going on with that one, let's go ahead and move on to phone 6478. Matthew, if it's possible to, for you to try and work with Amanda, and let's go with 46478.
Can you hear me?
Hello.
Let's go ahead and mute Amanda Brock, and we'll come back to Amanda Brock. It looks like she was able to get some sound, and we want to make sure to get her comment, but let's go ahead and move on to phone, phone 6478.
Amanda Brock is also Ahava Rose.
So that's me.
Who already spoke. Ahava Rose and Amanda Brock are the same person.
Okay.
There, there is a lot of people talking, so can I talk now?
Yes, now it is your turn. Sorry about the confusion.
All right. Good morning, everybody, and my name is Madeline Beuler, and I like to talk about, first, I'd like to thank you, Steve, who spoke up. It's very important that we speak up. we speak up, and it's maybe not exactly targeted to the supervisors and the whole board, because you have your agenda and you have to follow this. But the listeners who listen in and are on the verge of not knowing what to do, or are on the other side of the mainstream indoctrination. So that's why I'm speaking up here. And I like to say that it needs at least 12 years to approve a vaccination. It needs a lot of tests and everything. And so now they approved it just within a few months, and a device of vaccination, and I think nobody should take it. I mean, that's, that's, that's not, I mean, it's like totally not, not good. And I like to repeat myself about this hydroxychloroquine, like the medical doctor, MD, a real MD, because I know you like to hear that. It's Vladimir Zelenko. He has, he has 99% success in treating the people with this. And this is a benevolent drug, if one can say it like this. It's not like a vaccine, who one doesn't know what's in there, and very toxic. So I would kind of like see this more publicized in your board. Then also more effort to lower the cases of death, of cancer, diabetes, heart diseases and all that. Nothing is put in for that, no effort. And I know why, but you know, it's, of course, it's the big pharma. And it's money. It's all about money. So vaccination is not the key. You mentioned that vaccination is the key. That's not the key, according to what I said before. And so, yeah, I hope everybody is well, and all that masking and everything gets out of the way, because it doesn't work anyway. Fauci said it in the very beginning, that it doesn't work. One has to wear ten masks over each other. And you can imagine how we look.
Your three minutes are up. If you can finish your comment.
Okay, thank you. I'm finished.
Thank you very much. Let's do Amanda Brock, since we had a little confusion there. Let's see if we can get the sound going.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. That's working better. So, Dr. Pace, I just am curious, what not fully vaccinated encompasses? I have some questions. If I were to want to get the Pfizer doses, and I wanted to know what the ingredients are, are you familiar enough with them to tell me what is SM102? Could you also sign a liability form for me accepting responsibility for medical bills if I were injured? I also want to know, do you know about Chantix as a drug made by Pfizer? And it, I believe it was approved in 2006 by the FDA, but it's recently been linked to cancer. And I think that was after 15 years of FDA approval. Another thing I want to know is, can you produce an analysis on your own of more than five different ivermectin studies for next week, if that's a possibility? I'd like to get a broader idea of what the actual rest of the studies say. Do you also have any more trust in acquired and natural immunity? I think it's really important to boost our immune systems at this time. And I've been following a nuclear cardiologist and physicist in J.D., Dr. Richard Fleming. His website is theflemmingmethod.com. And he has a lot of prospective studies on his website that look like they have a really positive outlook for various kinds of treatments that have worked and have saved people's lives, so that we can go through this without having to put chemicals that we don't know what they are in our body. That's all. Thank you.
It would be very easy if you had the same name, rather than logging in as two different names. It seems a little deceiving and deceitful. And your questions, I will go ahead and answer some of those questions for you, Dr. Pace. Feel free if you want to respond. Just look at the numbers of what's happening, okay? Yes, there are chemicals in the processing of creating pharmaceuticals, absolutely 100%. It is not just an apple off a tree that's going to solve your problem. But look at the numbers. Go into a hospital and see what's happening. Nobody that works in a hospital is having a fun time right now. And, and a large majority of the people that are finding themselves in the ER are due to shortness of breath, and there is no coincidence as to why that is the case. And it happens to be that those who are unvaccinated are the majority of those cases versus the vaccinated, meaning the vaccination is working. At this moment in time, myself and the board are not forcing you to take the vaccine. The questions, you can have those questions all you want, but the fact of the matter is, the data shows that it is helping. And that's what matters. We need to do what we can to help our community. Three people died over the past weekend. Those people were unvaccinated. So you can be as deceitful as you want by logging in as Ahava Rose and Amanda Brock and changing the speed of your voice and not have the actual goal to come and see us right here in the audience and hide behind a screen. But please, come on. That's childish. Dr. Pace, if you want to respond.
Well, you know, I mean, I think really, from my point of view, what we're trying to do is to save lives and to keep people as healthy as possible. And a lot of the preventative stuff is a great idea, but we're in a different situation right now, which is a pandemic. And so, you know, any medical intervention does have risks. So the vaccines, there are some risks for sure. And but when you start looking at the benefits versus the risks, it's clearly prudent to go ahead and move forward with these things. And, you know, so I'm not sure why folks are so invested in kind of this challenging me to take personal responsibility for things, or to kind of spread this, this other kind of information. So it's confusing to me why people are so invested in doing that. But all we can do is just sort of try to roll out what we think is the best thing and how to minimize risk. So, yeah, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Dr. Pace. All right, I see no further comments in the Zoom room or in the board. Anything from the board members? Supervisor Piska?
Yeah, I just, I want to follow up on what you were saying, Supervisor Sabatier. This isn't fear mongering. Three people died over the weekend, and those families are mourning, they're suffering. They were members of our community, and they were unvaccinated. And this is real. And this is about taking care of our community. Please do not minimize these deaths, because we feel them. We all feel them.
Supervisor Simon?
You know, as has been stated many times by myself and the board members, what we're attempting to do is provide the information so you can make your individual decisions. We understand what is going on. The pandemic is real. We are having loss of life, and we're attempting to do everything we can to put the best decision in your hands. This information that we bring forward, we'll continue to do it. We know there is going to be opposition. You know individuals want to make their own decisions. We are at the point in this pandemic right now that we know there is an opportunity with the vaccinations to limit the sickness. If you are going to be infected, even if you are vaccinated, it limits your opportunity to be hospitalized or death. And we're going to continue to press this message as much as possible. As Jessica and Supervisor Sabatier said, and the rest of us, you know, so that would put us at 70 at this point. We're at 67, 72 deaths here in Lake County. And we're going to do everything we can to provide the information when we make decisions. We've said it before. If you are not going to take the vaccination, please, wear a mask. Do your part to help the other community members if you make that decision. And we'll continue to push this on. There is no Big Pharma agenda. This is not something any of us could foresee, as we took our positions here as supervisor. And we're going to work hard to just continue to provide the information. As you know, we have other subjects on this agenda. We are going to try and give you an opportunity for testing, vaccinations, if that's your choice. If not, we'll hopefully help implement other, you know, conditions that will help stop the spread of this disease. It is happening every day. It is affecting businesses, families, every day. As we sit here, there will probably be more that happen this afternoon. So we're going to continue with that message. We appreciate everybody. I've never heard this board shut anyone down. You can have your opinions. You're able to do that. And we'll continue that opportunity for an open conversation, even if we do not agree with you. But we will not sit here and be berated that we are, you know, bringing genocide or other things like that have been said. And it's absolutely ridiculous. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Supervisor. And with that, thank you very much, Dr. Pace, for that presentation. So I know that we have item 4.2 that is related to public health. If you don't mind, Dr. Pace, I'd like to take five minutes. We have some people in the audience who have been waiting very patiently for a proclamation. I'm going to go through that proclamation over the course of the next five minutes, and then we'll go ahead and hit up item 4.2. Is that okay with you, or do you have to be somewhere momentarily? Okay, I got the thumbs up. So let's go ahead, and we're going to move on to our 940 item, Presentation of Proclamation, designating Tuesday, August 31, 2021, as International Overdose Awareness Day. And it seems I have a team with me. If you guys would like to come up to the front. International Overdose Awareness Day 2021. Lake County Behavioral Health Services and Lake County Health Services recognize Tuesday, August 31, 2021, International Overdose Awareness Day. Whereas, International Overdose Awareness Day is recognized globally on August 31 to raise awareness about the risks of overdosing, honor the individuals whose lives have been lost from overdosing, and acknowledge the grief felt by families, friends, and communities. And whereas, International Overdose Awareness Day aims to publicly challenge the stigma associated with substance use disorders and overdosing. And whereas, in 2019, over 6,000 Californians died from a drug overdose, overdose, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. And whereas, every person deserves our best efforts to prevent injury and death from overdose, and it is imperative to support overdose prevention policies and projects, and to help make sure everyone understands overdose is a social issue, which impacts the victim, families, friends, and communities. The County of Lake Board of Supervisors, Lake County Behavioral Health Services, and Lake County Health Services urge all residents, parents, public, and private organizations, hospitals, schools, and colleges in Lake County to support efforts that will increase community awareness, understanding, and action to address drug overdose. Now therefore, the Board of Supervisors for the County of Lake join with the Lake County Behavioral Health Services and Lake County Health Services Departments and do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 31, 2021, as International Overdose Awareness Day, passed and adopted this 24th day of August 2021. And thank you all for being here. Your shirts remind me of the importance of what we have changed in the last few years, where now we have our EMS teams, our firefighters, and many of our law enforcement that carry naloxone with them, a lifesaving drug that brings them back so that momentarily we can get them to a hospital where they can get the care that they need. It does not solve their problem, but it gives them a chance. It gives them that second wind. And it has saved lives right here in Lake County. I'm very proud that we've implemented that here. So if you would like to please speak on this.
Hi, my name is Anina, and I'm the founder of Any Positive Change. And that's a lovely proclamation. Why, thank you, sir. And I want to say that drug users are truly the first responders. They are the ones who save each other's lives. And we have been dispensing naloxone, understanding order now, but in the beginning, a little, since 2008, when we found two of our very savvy drug users dead. The CDC estimates that in 2020, 90,000 people lost their lives to opiate overdose. So it seems like the theme is preventable death and pandemic, and opiates, the opiate epidemic is a pandemic, overdose is preventable death. And so I'd like to encourage everyone to get trained on carrying naloxone. It doesn't require a whole lot of smarts. I have it in my pocket. I have it in my purse. And we train drug users to, free of charge, to have naloxone and carry naloxone. And we can document hundreds of opiate reversals. So thank you so very much, sir, and all of you. Is this mine?
And I do want to add, and then I'll let Supervisor Scott add something. We are also, unfortunately, this is the importance of this proclamation, last year in our... Are we having an emergency, or is there just a technical problem? So we will finish this later. I'm going to take a break. Let's go ahead and reconvene. Sorry for that interruption. So we got a faulty emergency signal from someone's phone and thought that there was something going on locally. And so we wanted to take a break and make sure we checked on it, making sure not to ignore any potential emergencies if they did materialize. But nothing is happening. That was an old, old emergency call. So let's get back to what we were doing. I believe Supervisor Scott, you wanted to make a statement based on our presentation.
Yes, just wanted to add that being trained with Narcan is definitely something each and every one of us can do. It's free here in the county. You can approach the SafeRx booth at the fair in a couple of weeks, and they can train you on how to use Narcan, and you will actually leave with a kit. So you can too save a life if somebody does have an overdose. I took my teenage kids down to get trained with Narcan, and it was great information for them, because it's not only how to use the drug, but how to avoid an overdose, and how poisonous these drugs can be. So it was great training for my children. And also, there'll be training on, on August 31 at Lakeport Library Park all day, starting at 10 o'clock. SafeRx will be there to train anybody interested in how to use Narcan.
Thank you very much. And we have Director Metcalfe with us from Behavioral Health.
Oh, I'll be brief. This meeting has gone on for a while. But I just want to thank you for allowing us to introduce this proclamation today. And, you know, as the proclamation states, International Overdose Awareness Day recognizes and spotlights the need to continue working to educate folks on overdose prevention and harm reduction. And I do want to give a shout out to all of our community members who work tirelessly to help put an end to substance abuse. And as was stated also in the proclamation, this is kind of a joint effort between Behavioral Health Services and the Health Services Department. And I know there are a couple other folks from the Health Services Department that have more to share about this. So again, I promise to keep it brief, so I will hand it off to Health Services. I think Kim Tangerman might have something to say.
Please.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you, Todd. Yeah, we had a brief video to show you. Was there a chance to play that real quickly?
Yes. Are you able to share? There you are.
That's in the shares.
We are not getting the sound that we wanted. And Matthew, you're muted. Maybe that's Maybe that's the reason why the sound wasn't coming through?
Yes. Were you getting no audio at all from the video?
Yeah, no audio at all. Let's try it again.
Let me try it again.
Yeah.
Hello, my name is Bob Gardner. I appreciate you allowing me to do some public relations work for addicts and alcoholics. My credentials, I've been a California physician for 47 years. I've lived and worked in Lake County for the past 20 years. Over the years, I've been medical director of many of the social model and medical model programs in the rid, you know, the county, Lake County. So I've been able to follow substance abuse issues in our county for the last 47 years because that's where people would end up. Currently, I run the substance abuse program at Venice Health over in Lucerne, and we get a lot of referrals from the two emergency rooms. I'm also medical director of Hilltop Recovery, which is the only residential program in the county. My mission today is to help our community leaders see the suffering of human beings when they look and talk about addicts and alcoholics. Addictions is an equal opportunity disease. It's just not in our lower socioeconomic groups. I've seen people in the rid, Beverly Hills, where they clean our state's convertibles and thriving businesses in their nose and in their veins. It's a disease that affects almost every family in our county. Every family has an uncle or a child or somebody who's an addict or an alcoholic. So it's not just the ones who have the disease, it's everybody around them, including neighbors. This is something that's out there. It affects just about every family. I've treated a lot of the families of the community leaders over the past 47 years. So it's something that people may not want to talk about, and it's not a strong voting block, but each community leader represents the recovering addict and really all their The biochemistry of addiction is related to the neurotransmitter dopamine. And this is a neurotransmitter that is essentially in charge of motivation. It helps you get up, it helps you find food, it helps you reproduce, it helps you get a place to live. If your, if dopamine is low, you can't get out of bed, you have no motivation, you just feel bad. So what happens when people use, most of the drugs are going to elevate dopamine. Things like methamphetamines can raise dopamine levels 20 times normal. So you can see the attraction there. What happens, though, on subsequent uses, that dopamine level keeps not, it keeps going up, but nowhere near where it went up the time before. So it might be 90%, 80% of where it was the first time. Eventually, a person gets down where it may be 10%, 20% below normal. So unless they use to get that dopamine back up, they're sick, they're exhausted, and this is where the craziness starts. This decreased dopamine level is when a using addict will rob our house, take our TV set, go crazy, and be hustling in an emergency room. This is where they'll sell their mother's jewelry, because they're not necessarily trying to get high. They describe it as getting well, and it corresponds with their dopamine. So emergency room and doctor's offices often see this desperate behavior of the dopamine lack. This slack makes people feel there's no way out, and this is why some of the craziness happens. But I think it's important to realize they're biochemically sick and they deserve Each addict you see is somebody's kid, it could be somebody's parent, brother, sibling, neighbor. You know, think it through, it could be us, it could be, it's a disease that affects all rights of people. Sometimes we have genetic predispositions, so some families, instead of running high heart disease or high blood pressure, they have a large component of family members that have addiction and alcoholism. Sometimes people, like some of our veterans or people who get in accidents, are started on pain medicines by doctors, and that gets their addiction stoned. Some drugs are so powerful that you use it a few times, and then you're addicted. The good news about substance abuse and addictions is that people can recover. They can become doctors, lawyers, counselors, and even politicians. So I think that as politicians, it's good to remember that there's a large silent voting block that you represent, and they deserve respect and care. I think as we treat addictions better and better, our health dollars will go further, and I think the human suffering will decrease. I was on an economic group 20 years ago for Lake County. One of the biggest things was the concern about drug addiction, and we kept some businesses out of the area. So I think by recognizing the problem, giving it courtesy, we're going to help our community in a lot of ways. When people come to my office, I do the doctor things, I listen, I poke them, I draw blood, I order medications. But I think the most important thing I do is let these people know that I see them as a person, that I respect and care about them, and I think you keep coming back until they're better, that there's hope, that we're concerned about. For those who have drifted off into the positive statements, my request is that you, our elected officials, understand the biochemistry behind the changes in these people that we call addicts, and that we see the human being in the suffering addict, and we treat them with love and respect. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you for that. And I see that Kim Tangerman has her hand up?
Yeah, that was just for the audio part of it, but that's okay, I can take that back down. I just really wanted to thank Dr. Gardner for his willingness to make this video and for his expertise and his compassion. I also wanted to recognize the work that SafeRx and the Leave It Behind program are doing, as well as Any Positive Change. Getting the naloxone out there is just so important right now to our community, and they're working tirelessly to make sure that people are trained. I'd also like to invite everyone to the International Overdose Awareness Event that's on August 31 at Library Park, where we will have a lot of tabling going on from different agencies, and we really seek to reduce the stigma around substance use. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any further comments from the board? Let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Any comments on this item from the public? Please come to the microphone. And if you're in a Zoom room, please raise your hand, and we will call on you.
Joan Moss, I would like to know the name of this material or drug that people suffering from overdoses are given that saves their lives. I didn't hear that, and I didn't hear it spelled. Thank you.
Naloxone.
Could you please spell it?
N-A-L-O-X-O-N-E.
N-A-L-L.
Naloxone?
I'd be guessing.
N-A, let me look it up.
With the T-shirts.
Yes, N-A-L-O-X-O-N-E.
N-A-L-L-O-S.
N-A-L-O-X-O-N-E. And if you don't get that...
X-O-N-D. Thank you.
If it doesn't work, talk to me afterwards. All right, let's go ahead and bring it back. And thank you again for that presentation and the proclamation. Both departments working together, really appreciate it. And I do know of the hardship that you face when dealing with this issue in our community. Unfortunately, it's not one to brag about, but the County of Lake did have one of the highest overdose rates in the state of California. And so we, definitely something to pay attention to and something to look at taking action against. So thank you again. Okay, moving on. Let me get off my Google search for naloxone. And we are on 9.4, 6.4, wait, sorry. Dr. Pace, I lied, that was more than five minutes. But I see you are still here with us. We are going to take up item 4.2, which was approved as an extra item, and this is consideration of agreement with OptumServe Mobile Vaccination Van and Team. And I see Director Pomeroy is also with us as well.
Thank you, Chair Sabatier and Supervisors. So the Health Department team here has been working with Optum Serve, of course, now for a while, on our brick and mortar type of events. We were notified a week ago that the state was no longer going to pay for the vaccine piece of those sites. They would continue to pay for the testing sites, as I had mentioned earlier on another item. While we've been working with the vaccine team at the state, we had a meeting with them again on Friday. We've been meeting with them a couple days a week. And we had put in a resource request to get a mobile team here. That request was approved late Friday afternoon, and in order to get them here by Monday, we needed to get this approval through with your board. The team, they would be coming in, it's a team of two nurses and a support person, they've got a minivan. We at the Health Department supply the vaccine to them, so there still will be interaction and oversight from our vaccination team here at the Health Department. In addition to that, they're scheduled to be here on 8:30. They will do like a dry run day here at the Health Department, so we can make sure we have everything in alignment for them to start their processes. Then they will be at the fair for Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. They'll have a couple of days off, and then there will be mobile schedules set up around the lake. So our intent is that they're in a different district at least one day a week to support the mobile community needs. They can do two different locations in a day, but it's that eight-hour day. They cannot do split shifts, like work four hours in the morning and four hours at night. But like in Clear Lake, they could be at one side of Clear Lake for four hours, take a break for their lunch, move and do another three hours at somewhere else. There's a whole scheduling process we have to go through with them, but our request is, in order to keep the, to make our vaccination piece go mobile so that we can get the vaccine out into the communities, this request is being brought before your board for review and approval. The cost is just a little over $5,000 a day. They have the capacity to do 100 vaccines a day. We can schedule with them every Monday for the following week. If we want to change a location, we have to give them 72 hours. The total cost that we're asking for right now to start this and get it moving for the next two months is $200,000. And we're asking if that can come out of the ARPA funds to support the community COVID-19 vaccination outreach and response. And Dr. Pace may have more to give you on that. I did email you their cost breakdown, which I received late yesterday, so you guys should have that in your email. We have not received the actual agreement yet or the MOU. We're still working with that, to get that, and so we're asking your board to give CAO Hutchinson approval to sign that when it comes in.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Any comments or questions from board members? Supervisor Pyska? Supervisor Crandall?
I don't know, I think I didn't see in the vaccinate, or the memo, is it Pfizer or Moderna, do we know? Or are we looking at that yet? Or we're just looking at the Clinton having this budget?
We're asking for both, but we're really trying to concentrate on Pfizer so we can get the age groups from 12 and above.
And that way you just do the one shot and not have to follow up with the second in case people don't like take...
That would be J&amp;J, and there was no mention from them of doing J&amp;J.
Okay. And so I'm just wondering, only because we're going to have to schedule those second vaccinations, just want to make sure that they don't get done one time and then nothing happens, if that makes sense. But I'm just asking, that's all.
Now, follow through is important, so I appreciate the question. Supervisor Pyska?
And that's why we're asking for two months, Supervisor, is because we want to make sure those second injections happen back at the same location where they received the first one.
Thank you, Denise.
You're welcome.
My question is about, so you'll be doing vaccines and testing simultaneously on the same days? Or is it going to be set up for different services for different days?
Right now, we're still working out those logistics, and so those details have not been finalized, but the thought is that we would be rotating, and vaccine would be at that site one day and then testing a different day. They're very separate teams, they're not the same teams, so we have to make sure they have enough space, you know, bathrooms, all their supplies that they could do to do it mobilely.
Any further...
I don't know if Carolyn is on here or not, but Carolyn and Emily have been working, and myself have been working with this team, but Carolyn and Emily are really trying to work out, and Dean is working on the logistics of this.
And I do not see them here, but we do have a question from Supervisor Simeon, or a comment.
Yeah, a little, well, a question. Just want to clarify, you know, obviously understand it's coming from the American Rescue Plan funds, and this is an allowed expense, correct, Carol? This is exactly what these funds can be used for. I just want to clarify that for everybody. This is exactly what some of the ARPA funds are to be used for, to bring and help enhance the opportunity for testing vaccinations into the communities that need it the most. And some of the folks, you know, we've talked about traveling, transportation issues and others, and this is just one more step in that opportunity, just...
That's correct. It is an allowable use.
I know I can answer my own question, but I wanted to clarify that, that, you know, this was, you know, not a request out of ordinary, this is exactly what these funds are to be used for. Secondly, I guess the question would be to you, Denise, obviously talking about communication. We know that folks, every time we have an update, we are constantly talking about the opportunities where they can get vaccinated or get tested, and just want to make sure that we have a very good communication opportunity out to our communities, both on Indian County websites and other areas. And I am much appreciative of the conversation happening, and like we said, so it'll be hitting every district throughout the week, from my understanding and what we're talking about today. And I think that is what we need to do to bring these to the people. So thank you. And I guess my question is, do you have a communication plan to get that out to everybody?
We are working with Matthew and the three agencies that we've contracted with preliminary to get a communication plan out as soon as the logistics... to get a communication plan out as soon as the logistics are nailed down.
Thank you.
Any further comments? So I do have a slight hesitance for this item here. $200,000. It seems to me that because there's a, you pay people for the day's worth of work, but for example, they may have just done one vaccine. I'd like to have a way to obtain the data of how much are we actually getting out of this? Because if we're spending $200,000 and only 10 people got vaccinated, it's just not worth it. And I know that that's probably not going to be the case. But we have opportunities in our community to get vaccinated. I want to make sure that we have other opportunities. But I also want to make sure that we're not just spending money on something that's going to cost us $200,000 for just a very meager amount of vaccines, when maybe we could have done that in a different way to get those vaccines to the people. What is the, is there any checkpoints during this two month period? Because again, it's an expensive amount for just two months' worth of work. Yes, if we could do 100 vaccines a day, I think that's absolutely worth it. But if it's going to be five to 10 a day, I don't know that that's actually worth it versus working specifically to try and get to those five or 10 people. I don't know. I just, I'm concerned. We have the money, but just because we have money doesn't mean we have to spend it unless we actually get something in return. So kind of curious if there's any checkpoints where we might be able to check in, look at the data and see if we want to continue versus boom, we're done, we spent $200,000.
So we have, we already have a weekly meeting scheduled with Optum that we've been doing throughout the response. That meeting will continue. And that is the exact purpose of that meeting is to make sure that their needs are being met, but also it's serving, continues to serve the purpose of the intent of the board.
Okay. And in those meetings, because you say you want them here by Monday, by Monday, is there a plan of where they're supposed to be to start the vaccination? Or is that when the outreach and the plan to go out starts? Because it just feels like it's very short notice. And I'm not aware at this moment in time of any plans to, for a mobile unit to go around. That's kind of similar to the question that Supervisor Simon had about the communication. But I just want to make sure again that we don't have a week's lag of time where there's minimal activities because nobody knows about it or is not as aware about it. Again, it's just, I'm looking at the number for the short amount of time and just a little concerned.
So Mondays, we have a clinic here at the Health Department, and they will be coming in to do that clinic here at the Health Department, which will allow us to make sure we have everything in line for the fair. And Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, they will be the vaccine, the main vaccinators at the fair site. And then this, that gives us the beginning of next week to get the message out for the rotation of the mobile van the next week following.
Okay. And then Dr. Pace, you spoke about farm worker vaccine program or something along those lines. Sorry for not using the right terms. Is that something that this would be utilized with?
Well, this is, the farm worker program you're talking about is this week. So it's this Thursday. We've already got that set up. So that's, this predates that, this mobile site coming in. But it's certainly something that could be part of the plan in the future. I think it's, you know, I think really from my point of view, partly what we're talking about here is trying to really activate the demand in the county and trying to get people vaccinated now before the winter. And in this way, by getting a very robust program and getting it moving around the county more, we are going to have the capacity to vaccinate people. Now it's going to be up to us and all of our partners to really generate interest in folks that are unvaccinated to try to take the next step and to try to get, because if we could get, we've got something a little over 50% of the eligible people vaccinated now. If we could get that up to 70 or 75% by winter, we would be in a lot better shape in terms of protecting the capacity of the hospitals, preventing severe illness and death if, if and when the next surge comes. So I think the thinking here is to really try to get something really solid in place so that we can really start trying to encourage people on a, on a more robust level to get moving forward with this, especially the schools.
And at this moment in time, you said that the agreement is being worked on. If we approve today, we approve for the conversation for the agreement to begin? Or we approve and you sign the agreement and it gets started? Because I am also a little concerned that I don't see the agreement in front of us and spending $200,000 without an actual agreement, which is basically a contract. I'm slightly uncomfortable.
I haven't seen it yet. I did get the class proposal and we have asked for, and I'm not sure Supervisor or Chair if it's an agreement or an MOU, or if it's just a resource that the state has allocated that they, that we're going to be responsible for paying for. So I, we're still working with them on some of the logistics.
Okay. And I believe C.A.O. Hutchinson had something to say. You unmuted. If you can mute your Zoom.
It's unmuted, but, okay. So I, so I was going to suggest, the hope is that this service would start on Monday. But you do have a special board meeting on Tuesday. What if this service started after Tuesday? And then we could bring the agreement to your board on Tuesday. So you can look over the agreement because it is a considerable amount of money. It's certainly a service that I think we want to offer. And I believe, I was told that it has the potential capacity for up to 100 shots a day. If it could operate at that level, it probably would be cost effective. That would certainly be the hope over the 40-day period that it would be in the county. But if, if we delayed this by just a couple of days, then it would give your board the opportunity to see the actual agreement.
Ms. Grant?
From a legal perspective, that would be wise because a delegation-
Microphone, please. I don't know if you're not speaking into it or-
Hello?
We killed your microphone.
From a legal perspective, that would be wise because a delegation should not be vague or generalized. It does need to be specific. Your board can delegate your authority in more of a ministerial capacity than a discretionary one. So it's always better to have the parameters of whatever authority you're delegating very clearly spelled out.
And if you act in that way, then today you would be giving conceptual approval to use the ARPA funds. But then you could approve the contract on Tuesday and have the service start shortly thereafter.
Okay. I thank you for that. Any comments from that?
My only comment was to make sure that we would still be able to be at the fair because that is going to be a big event with many people will be able to get vaccinated. So I don't want to, to delay it and not be able to have this mobile van at the fair.
Any other comments from board members? Okay, let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Anyone have any questions or comments about this item? Seeing none in the Zoom room and seeing none in the boardroom. Let's go ahead and bring it back to the board. I personally feel more comfortable, but I also want to ask Director Pomeroy and Dr. Pace, what is the possibility of what was offered to start as of Tuesday? Does that cancel every possibility of them coming here? I'd like to know what the repercussions of our potential actions, what they could be.
So what we would probably, what we'd ask them to do is start on Wednesday. They have to have two days off in a row and with a five day work week. So the thought was they would come Monday, get the lay of the land, look at the fairgrounds, provide vaccine here at the Health Department, have Tuesday, Wednesday off, and then work four days for the fair. But we can ask them to just come on Wednesday and do their, the same thing that they would have done on Monday on Wednesday.
And is anything signed for them to be here on Monday? Because I wouldn't mind spending ARPA funds to pay them for the day to at least come and see the lay of the land and to set up for this. Because at that point, that would not be an arm and a leg. And then review the agreement and then move forward with either the agreement or whatever it is that we decide to do. What, do you think that would be possible? That way there's not a delay in their process? Because I agree with Supervisor Scott, but also I don't want to put ourselves in a situation that is not necessarily the exact position that we want to be in.
There's nothing been signed. That's way above my authority. So that's why it's here before your board as a, as an extra item. And I think in working with them over the last several weeks, they are going to prefer doing the Wednesday through Sunday. They, they really like the five days in a row with two days off. So I can reach out to them and check and try to get back to your board before your board closes today, if you would prefer that. Otherwise, I would take Carol's recommendation and move forward with it, starting here in Lake County on Wednesday and being at the fair Thursday through Sunday.
Okay, C.A.O. Hutchinson?
Yeah, I just wanted to pose a slight alternative to my earlier recommendation. And that would be, as you know, department head or myself have authority to approve up to $25,000 worth of service without coming to your board. And so what I would recommend in order to get them here and get started is that Denise or myself could approve a couple of days. And then you can see the agreement for the longer haul on Tuesday, the 31st, and make your decision about long term. How would that be?
And that somewhat parallels my thought for the Monday, knowing that it would only cost a certain amount. I know we have it on a day-to-day basis, what it would cost. So yes, I would agree to that. It looks like everyone else is agreeing to that. I do have one final question. Will the agreement be ready to go on Tuesday? Because I know sometimes there's some back and forth and it doesn't always happen in a snap of a finger. Just making sure that there's enough time to be able to come back to the board on Tuesday with a final MOU or a final agreement.
I will make it happen as long as they get it to us. I mean, that's, you know, and we're hoping to have it today. But I, I don't know. I haven't heard from them yet this morning.
Okay. All right. Any further questions from the board? Let's go ahead and reopen it up. Just, I don't even know if I opened it up for the public again. Come to the microphone if you have any questions or comments.
Joan Moss, I'm sorry to be the one to always ask questions, but I'd like to know if people coming into the fair will get free tickets into the fair if they get a vaccine?
I believe that is a different agenda item that will be coming up.
Oh, you're not going to answer that question? I mean, this is-
We can discuss it at that agenda item that is on our agenda today.
I thought that was what we were discussing. No?
Not right now. Right now, we're discussing a contract with Optum Serve for a mobile van unit to do vaccines.
I think, I think there should be a mobile van offering COVID tests also. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further comments or questions? And let's bring it back. I believe we have consensus on how to move forward. I don't think there's a need for a motion at this time. Looking at Ms. Grant, who's shaking her head? No. All right. Thank you so much. And thank you again to the public health team.
Thank you.
And all right, now let's keep moving to our 9:45 a.m. item, Presentation of Letter on Be-, wait, yes. Presentation of Letter on Behalf of the Lake County Drought Task Force, Recommending the Board Enact Water Conservation Measures. Good morning.
Good morning.
Would you like to come in the seats up front?
Sure. Good morning. Is this on?
No, you have to not push it. There you go.
Good afternoon. This is on now. Awesome. Thank you, board, for having us. Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Marina Delajanos, and I serve as the Deputy Water Resources Director for the Lake County Watershed Protection District. I am joined by Lake County OES Manager Dale Carnathan, and we are coming to the board on behalf of the Lake County Drought Task Force Work Group, which is a non-board-appointed work group that we have been meeting routinely for the past few months. So as you can recall, on May 11th, 2021, the Board of Supervisors passed Resolution Number 2021-55, Proclamation of Emergency Declaration for Drought Conditions. And on July 27th of this past year, Representatives from the Lake County Water Resources Department, Office of Emergency Services, Environmental Health, Special Districts, and Lake County Drought Task Force Work Group, a work group organized by the California Department of Water Resources, provided an update on current drought conditions. So in this presentation, we promised that we would come back to the board in the next month with the letter that has been drafted by the Lake County Drought Task Force Work Group. And now I'm going to pass it over to Dale Carnathan, again, Lake County OES Manager, to read the letter drafted by the Lake County Drought Task Force to be read to you today.
Good morning.
And Mr. Carnathan, if you could put your mask still on, as long as you're speaking in the microphone, we'll hear you. Thank you.
This letter is dated today. It's addressed to Chairman Bruno Sabatier, Chair of Lake County Board of Supervisors. Dear Chairman Sabatier, as you're aware, Lake County is in the midst of a severe drought with no relief in the foreseeable future. We are currently feeling the effects of El Nino, El Nino neutral conditions in the South Central Pacific Ocean with indications that we may descend into a second winter with La Nina conditions, similar to last winter. Of course, we know that either condition, El Nino or La Nina, effects can be highly variable. Clear Lake is already receded below zero on the Rumsey scale. To put this into perspective, as of August 23rd, 2021, Clear Lake was at minus 1.47 Rumsey compared to August 23rd of 2020, where Clear Lake was at 1.83 positive Rumsey. There are anecdotal reports of wells no longer able to provide useful water to their owners. Several water purveyors are taking actions to preserve their access to water by extending their intakes further into Clear Lake. The Lake County Drought Task Force has been meeting biweekly to assess the needs and potential solutions to issues surrounding the drought in Lake County. The task force consists of representatives from the state, California Department of Water Resources, State Water Resources Control Board, County Public Works Water Resources, County Special Districts, Tribes, private and public water purveyors, and the Sheriff's Office of Emergency Services. The task force meetings have resulted in an open dialogue for discussion of water-related issues, an initial public information and awareness campaign, the sharing of resources and potential solutions, and an agreement that Lake County should enact a water conservation and use policy as soon as possible. As of this time, the only policy restriction on water use in the county code is intended to prevent the export of groundwater, as County Code Section 28-11. Furthermore, County Code Article 8, Section 9.61 states, "No person shall construct, repair, reconstruct, destroy, or abandon any well, monitoring well, or cathodic protection well within the unincorporated area of Lake County unless a well permit has first been obtained from the health officer. In emergency situations involving an existing agricultural or public water system well, where immediate work on or or replacement of such existing well is necessary to prevent interruption of service, verbal approval to commence work can be given by the health officer or his designee with the above required permit to be obtained during the next regular county working day. However, this code applies only to the well's construction and not to its use. There are reports from reputable drillers with valid permits that other wells are being drilled without inspection or permits." The Lake County Drought Task Force strongly recommends that the Lake County Board of Supervisors enact conservation measures in conjunction with the Lake County Water Resources and Environmental Health Departments and other private and public water purveyors to restrict the use of water and to identify and develop enforcement tools to encourage conservation and prevent water wastage. If pursued, this restriction among Lake County residents would align with Executive Order N-10-21, signed by the Governor of California, Gavin Newsom, on July 8th, 2021. Executive Order N-10-21, signed by the Governor of California, Gavin Newsom, on July 8, 2021, calling all Californians to voluntarily reduce water use by 15% from their 2020 levels. Some of these tools might include restrictions on watering, times and durations, required inspections of equipment, metering of wells, use of flow-restricting devices, and moratoriums on the issuance of new well and use permits that substantially affect water supplies or sources. The Lake County Drought Task Force will continue to meet on this critically important topic and would be pleased to assist your board in the development and enactment of rules to protect our endangered water supply. Sincerely, the Lake County Drought Task Force."
Thank you very much for the work that you're doing, and thank you for this very important letter. Are there any comments or questions? And I will say that some of these items have been discussed here at the Board. Obviously, the actions have not been taken. I'm very interested, as soon as possible, to discuss how we can continue to conserve water, especially knowing that I'm hearing the reports as well, and this was corroborated in your report today, that we are not expecting the water that we would love to all have over the course of this winter. Now, I know the meteorologist is never always perfect, and I'm really hoping this time that they're wrong, but it's something we need to prepare for, and I think it's important that we review some of these items. So I am absolutely in favor in asking the departments listed in your letter to work on a proposal, to come back to us, so we can discuss, in my opinion, all of the items that are on the list. And looking to see if that's Supervisor Scott.
I definitely agree with that. And even if we knew we were going to be getting inches and inches of rain this coming winter, there's always going to be drought down the road. So we need to be looking at these. So I definitely agree with that.
And again, even if they predict war water, doesn't mean that they're going to be right. Supervisor Pyska.
Well, at this point, at this point, we have to plan for a very dry winter. We're in the position that we're in, and we have to expect that. If we get more rain, that's great, but for our sustainability and our planning, this is where we're at. This is our reality, and this is what we have to plan for.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, absolutely. I'd agree that more conversation needs to be had as we're looking at this. And like I've been saying, this won't be the last drought that we go through. So looking at those opportunities that we can enact now are important. And studying each geographic location in the county, because each is different, you know, obviously the folks pulling water out of the lake are more affected than the folks that are using the groundwater out of the aquifers. So just looking at it as a holistic situation throughout the county, you know, because obviously my district is, you know, on the south end is a little different than the top end of my district, who pulls water out of the lake. So looking at it. But absolutely, conservation in all aspects moving forward should be something that we're looking at. We're talking about it for fire. We're looking at it, you know, in other areas. So yes, I'm in favor. Let's have those conversations and see what we can come up to benefit all of our constituents.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and open it up for the public. And we have Alyssa, who has her hand up in the Zoom room. Please provide your name.
Hi there. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, thank you. And you have three minutes. And again, please provide your name.
Nice. Thank you. My name's Alyssa Gordon. I am the project manager for the Hidden Valley Lake Community Services District, the water wastewater utility in the region in which Supervisor Simon referenced. We're in the southern part of the county, and we are drawing water from the aquifer. But I just wanted to speak in support of this letter and the drought task force in general. I am a member of the drought task force, and just wanted to drive the point home that we are looking for a holistic solution. We're all in this together. I've written a few words, because I'm nervous speaking in front of this auspicious audience. So if you'll indulge me, it won't be more than three minutes, I promise. We're grateful for the opportunity to participate in a county-wide organization. We work together in a single industry, water, for common goal, the continued delivery of safe drinking water. Of the water agencies in this group, we are all unique in our delivery of the same service. The size of our customer base varies, the source of our water, the method of treatment of the water is different, and our organization structures are different. Structures are different. But when we meet together as a group, this variety serves as a benefit. We're learning from each other. We're collaborating. We're talking to each other. This water connection that we share is also evident in the general geology of the region. While Hidden Valley Lake CSD draws its water from the ground, and the city of Lakeport draws its water from Clear Lake, for example, we're all connected in the same watershed. The area surrounding Clear Lake is part of the Upper Creek watershed, and the southern portion of the county is part of the, I'm sorry, Upper Cache Creek watershed, and the southern portion of the county is part of the Upper Poota Creek watershed. But both of these watersheds are part of the Sacramento River watershed. Again, we're all in this together. This is a natural resource that we all need to work together to properly treat and be good stewards. The Lake County Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy of 2016 summed up the connection between groundwater and surface waters. Water from streams and lakes seep down into aquifers, or where aquifers or trans罕ing formations are exposed to the surface, precipitation percolates directly into the aquifers. So you see how we are all connected in that rather technical way. Again, HBLCSD is grateful to be part of this important group, and we support efforts to protect this natural resource. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Jennifer Smith. And again, please provide us with your name, and you have three minutes.
Good afternoon. This is Jennifer Smith. I know that cannabis has been a big target in some of this drought conversation and policymaking. And so I would just like to know, what is the best avenue? Because there are several presentations that have been made, both to the Board in writing and to the Farm Bureau, as, well, maybe not the Farm Bureau, but definitely the Ag Department, about water-saving techniques that we have available to us, whether it be through berry hoops or hoop houses. We can save up to 20% of our water consumption, and yet these practices aren't being looked at seriously. They're not being considered. And I think that we need to find some ways, while these best practices, not just in cannabis, but all agriculture, they exist, and we need to find ways to get them implemented, and looking at that long term. Like, again, not just looking at this for this year or even next year, but having this plan in place and these practices available for our use. So I would like for the Board to consider how we start looking at these opportunities that are available, just not being utilized. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And I think what you're alluding to is the idea of a drought management plan, which at this moment, we do not have, but there are conversations occurring within the county staff about the creation of that plan, as it is important to have something to help lead us in what needs to be changed during times of declared drought emergencies. And so I appreciate the comment. I see no further hands up. Any hands up in the boardroom on this? Okay. Please provide your name, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Mike Mitzel. So I think there's a lot of good points brought up in that letter. There's also some scary ones, like a moratorium on all use permits. I think that the drought ordinance that you guys passed a couple weeks ago addresses at least some of these concerns that were brought up in there. And I think that that is a better way to go about it than just putting a all-out ban on all use permits. If you, the way you guys set up the drought ordinance, to look at each project individually and the impacts of that project on neighboring properties, is a way more efficient way to do it. Cannabis already has a lot of those measures that are noted in that letter, like metering of water, and there's more regulation on the cannabis side of water than definitely any other industry in the county, in the state, probably in the whole world. But I just feel like that urgency ordinance is a way better way to go, and just reenacting something like that would be better than putting a moratorium on all use permits. So thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any further comments before we bring it back to the Board? All right, bringing it back to the Board, and I believe we had consensus to have staff work on those things, or the task force?
Yes.
Seeing yeses. All right. Again, thank you very much. We're all as concerned.
Thank you so much, Board, and we will see you in the next few weeks with a proposal.
Thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and move on to our 10:30 a.m. item, Consideration of Urgency Ordinance Regarding Water Haulers Delivering Water to Cannabis Cultivations. And if it's possible to put up on the projector screen, or I guess if we can just share in the Zoom room and have that be on the projector screen, the actual ordinance itself. It's fairly small and simple to be able to do that. And if we can just kind of scroll past the whereas. And hopefully that helps a little bit. So I do want to introduce this. Lots of complaints and lots of conversations about water trucks, water haulers. Sorry, I really need to specifically say that term. And the reason why I don't want to say water trucks is because there's all types of vehicles that are carrying water around right now. And the complaints that we receive oftentimes are that trucks are delivering to cannabis grows. Hard for people to know whether a cannabis grow is a legal grow or an illegal grow. The major- my time is up?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
You're done.
Mr. Chair, I hate to interrupt you, but you needed that local health emergency ratified with your signature, and I believe it's in your inbox.
So we need to just take a quick 10-second break. I am told I need to sign something for Cal OES. If you can just indulge me for a few more seconds. I won't even sign. I'll just type my name. You're welcome. My name is spelled correctly, so we're good. No, I want to make sure you get this. So thank you so much. Okay, sorry about that. So again, most of these things are happening in our illegal grows. And so basically, at first, I started thinking about the process of how to do this. I thought about going through a permit process where all water haulers get the permit. Then I started thinking about the difficulties of that. Am I going to have Caltrans trucks that are working on our projects out here come here and get a permit? Do I exempt them? If I exempt them, how do we know who's permitted and who's not? It just became a real difficult task. Sat down multiple times with Ms. Grant, our county council, to discuss this. At the state level, they have a licensing process. And so there was no need to kind of overlap and do what the state was doing. And so I eventually really just went simple, kept it really simple. If a water truck is seen delivering water at a cannabis grow site, then they will be penalized. There will be an administrative fine. Within the ordinance, it talks about, it relates to, I forget the exact chapter of it. Let me see if I can find it. Section 13-13 of the municipal code, which is where administrative penalties are. At this moment in time, we are reviewing the administrative penalties, but it would still relate back to that exact same location. During our conversation with the administrative penalties, I brought up, based on some conversations that we were having about, similar to the construction road penalties, how you get a double fine. In speaking with Ms. Grant about this, if there was a specific term that would be identified in our administrative penalties as a, these types of violations are related to a double fine, a triple fine, whatever we end up doing, that if we have a term, then we can utilize that term and other ordinances to basically say these are high severity violations. So the term is high severity violation. Most likely, we might see that in the upcoming administrative fines. If it's not approved, then that line means nothing, but it would still be available for administrative penalties based on what the end result of that ordinance upgrade will look like. I just think that because of the severe drought and this being an urgency ordinance, that it does fit as a high severity violation. You are using water typically for things that have not been assessed through the sequel process. And then also, there are, it does go over the legal cannabis, where in Part F of the 27.13 AT3V, it talks about how you can have water delivered if there is an emergency, and you have seven days after doing that to relay that information to CDD. And I feel that there's not a definition of what emergency means. And in my opinion, if your water pump dies and you can't pump water out of your well to water your plants, that is an emergency. But when it's a long-term drought and you don't have water, I think that's not an emergency in the sense that you can now have trucks coming every single day, dropping off for your grow to continue. And so I identified that, that an emergency is a temporary issue that can be resolved within a short period of time, less than 14 days. A declared drought emergency shall not be deemed an emergency for this section and shall not allow for water to be supplied by a licensed retail water supplier. And that covers, I believe, the gist of this urgency ordinance, and I'm open for questions, suggestions, or changes. Supervisor Pyska.
Well, I'm glad you clarified the water truck, water hauler part of this. It was a question that I had. I know in my conversations with supervisors in Trinity County, they have a 100-gallon limit. If it's more than 100 gallons on a truck, then it falls under an ordinance like this. So we have non-commercial trucks with a removable water tank.
Tote.
Tote, yes, on the back. So this would apply to those as well?
So the water hauler definition that I placed in here, in the definitions, any individual or commercial entity that operates a tuck or tanker carrying water. I got that out of the California State Code. I wanted to at least stick with that. Now, we can look at revising that, and I would suggest that Ms. Grant help us to make sure that we don't just create something that doesn't work. But I wanted to make sure to utilize something that was supported at least by our vehicle code, even though this is not a vehicle code violation, but didn't want to create a definition out of thin air.
Yeah. What do you think?
Your microphone's gone.
Hello. Hello? Yeah, okay. I'll just talk into my lapel.
I'm not wearing a wire.
This is comfortable. The CIA is going to be looking for somebody like me. I'm so subtle. I do think that you'd be looking then at redefining water hauler for purposes of this ordinance by virtue of how you want to refine the definition. I was just looking through the ordinance to see if that would be- Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I think you could. I think you can just simply refine the definition of water hauler for purposes of this ordinance, and it would carry through then, and only be applicable to how you define it. So if you're looking at changing the definition from an individual or commercial entity that operates a truck or tanker carrying water to either carrying water of over X amount, or however you'd like to narrow that definition in your discussions today and after public comment, that would probably be a fix that you could make directly on the face of the document today and still move forward.
Yeah, I'm less concerned that we define it by the amount of water, just that these smaller trucks- And then just for clarity, we're reviewing the administrative fines, but what we currently have as administrative fines would be applicable until we make those updates.
Yes, and there's a yes from Ms. Grant as well.
The ordinance with the updated administrative fines is coming back at the next regular meeting of your board on the 14th of September.
Okay. That's it.
Thank you. Supervisor Scott.
And talking about administrative penalties, are we going to be looking at code enforcement to be administering these penalties? You know, how is a community going to maybe help us track down these trucks? Because it's a fast process. They go in, they deliver, they go out. How are we going to catch these guys?
So in my opinion, and I think that code enforcement will have to come up with their strategy, from my conversations with code enforcement, they go up to these grows, these illegal grows, and they see the trucks already. And they just have no tools to go after the trucks, because there's nothing on our municipal code that says that the trucks are liable for delivering to illegal grows. So I, my opinion is, keep going after the illegal grows, and you're going to catch these trucks. And once you start catching these trucks, we're going to slow things down a whole lot. I think that just solely staking out and waiting for a truck is a waste of their time. But I think that in conjunction with the other work that they're already doing, with the priorities we gave them, which was illegal grows, we also gave them the priority of illegal water hauling, and this needed to happen for them to have some sort of teeth to be able to do something about it.
And then would we be able to go after those that are permitted and having water delivered, and they shouldn't be because they haven't contacted CDD? Can the public be able to take pictures and send those in if they see trucks going in and out? Because I know I get many, many calls about trucks moving around from the community, and they're more than willing to step up and help.
And I'm not going to speak for CDD, maybe CAO Hutchinson can, but I'm sure that it doesn't hurt to receive that kind of information.
Absolutely. But will we be able to go after these trucks if we have these pictures, or do we really have to have CDD catch them?
Well, I thought the intent really was for, when CDD sees them in action, to act, but I did not envision that they would, excuse me, when code enforcement sees them in action, to take proper steps. But to actually go out and try to find them, I did not think so.
But I think that level of information would be helpful.
Yes.
And most likely, if that information is provided, then it's also information about an illegal grow. And so if we go after either one, it will slow down the request for water during our drought that we really need to conserve water as much as possible. So I think that that level of information is going to be helpful, and we'll let code enforcement figure out how to best utilize that and go through a process. Ms. Grant?
Thank you. And certainly, that level of information is an impetus for further investigation. So it does alert them that something untoward is happening, and that's valuable in and of itself. It may also be valuable in determining the amount of the penalty, if anything establishes frequency, et cetera. So there's a number of uses. Information is always valuable.
Thank you very much. Any further, oh, Supervisor Pieska.
Just one other point for the public. I think we'll have to update our code enforcement form so that there's a way for the public to log a complaint rather than sending it to us and then we pass it along. So we need that formal pathway in place.
Okay, any further comments? Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, and did we, did you cover already, oops, I'm sorry, did you cover already the water hauler license procedures under the Health and Safety Code already, I think? Was that mentioned?
License procedure.
Because I didn't see it. Well, there's an email I got from a constituents, and I'll just read it.
I know that there's a license procedure with the state, with the Water Board, Water Resources Control Board.
Okay.
And I did not go over that.
Well, I'll just read it off, and then you can tell me if we covered this or not, because I think we've mentioned something along the lines. It says, "It is highly likely that water haulers are delivering water to legitimate law-abiding citizens and customers as well. What means are available to police the end users or to make a distinction between legal and illegal customers? According to the California Health and Safety Code, Section 1111120, water hauler license procedure. A license is required for anybody hauling more than 250 gallons of water." And there was no quick reference as to whether a licensed hauler is required to keep a log or possibly report delivering data back to the state. But if so, this could possibly be a method of policing. Does that make sense?
And so I will say that this should not impact at all. That is not the intent of anybody using water for anything unless there's cannabis activity commercial and illegal cannabis occurring. And so there's, it even says in there that it does not impact the adult use. So if you have your six plants, you're not going to get in trouble if water is being delivered to your house. But if you have hundreds of plants illegally or thousands of plants legally, there is already a speculation in that ordinance saying no water deliveries. And it also states in here that we will be in contact and communication with Water Resources Control Board if we find a water hauler to abuse this. And whatever happens through them is what happens through them, because we do not have the ability to take action at the state level.
Thank you. And well, and everything else, I think Jessica covered, a lot of people are concerned about the totes in the back of the trucks, that's the main thing, but we covered that, so.
Yeah, it sounds like we can change the definition to cover all that. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, and, you know, I think we're moving in the right direction. Obviously, we'll see what happens today. But, you know, my clarification, which I think you did a little bit of that, is to make sure that, because I have a lot of constituents, especially in my south end of my district, past our tribe down there, all the way to the county line, where every year, folks are hauling water to take care of themselves and their homes. So I just want to make sure and get that clarified. What we're talking about here is for illegal cannabis deliveries. I know the last time this came up, a lot of folks sent emails, called me and asked, hey, you know, we do this to survive. So I just want to clarify that for our communities out there, people listening. This is not, if you are looking to take care of your well going dry and you're just surviving on this water as these deliveries are happening, I just, I really want to clarify that, because I know there's going to be, you know, as always happens, unintended consequences. And I just want to make that very clear, that this is not for personal use, can deliver water to your homes as needed and continue to do that, so.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and open it up to the public, and go ahead and come to the microphone and raise your hand as well in the Zoom room. We'll get to the Zoom room when we're done here in the chamber. Please provide your name in three minutes.
My name's Mike Mitchell. So I have a few questions. There's, I don't believe that a legal cannabis grow that runs low on water in a drought should just be left stranded. And that's basically what you would do if you don't let them use the drought as an emergency and they can't bring in water. I just don't see where the evil act of that really lies. It's like you have an approved project whose well isn't producing what it was when it was approved in a severe drought, and now, it's like, where, what do they really do at that point if they can't bring water in? Do they just abandon the grow? Do they have to pay the tax after that? If like, if you have a planted grow and your well runs dry, are you still on the hook for all the taxes after that if you can't get the water delivery? And then my other question is, there's a lot of grows that use water deliveries for dust prevention, because you get dust on the plant and it pretty much ruins it. It can test for asbestos and other, like, chemicals. I'll make you fail the testing, so there's a lot of grows that are using water deliveries to spray down the roads. And so just a water truck going into a grow site doesn't really prove that you're doing anything wrong. Even under the ordinance now, that's fully allowed to use water as dust management, so it just, it seems like it's very unenforceable, and just because you see a truck going into a grow doesn't mean that they're up to something that's illegal. It just, there's a lot of, like, holes in enforcement of this, I feel like, so it just, I think the theory behind it and like, the thought behind it is there, but I just, I definitely have a problem with excluding permitted grows from ever getting water deliveries. If it's not, if this isn't an emergency, like, what is? And then what do they do if they can't get a water delivery? Are they just supposed to close the use permit down until the well produces what it did? And then if you, like, the last thing, you're trying to shut down well permits, or there's a recommendation to shut down well permits, so like, the obvious thing would be if your grow is running low on water, you drill another well, but it doesn't seem like you're even going to be able to do that in the future. So I just don't know where that leaves a permitted grow that's, well, isn't producing what it was when it was permitted. So I don't know. Thank you.
So I just want to say that the example that you gave would absolutely not hold water, just because we see a water truck going into a direction. We have to have a little bit more faith in our code enforcement officers, that they're building a strong case, that they are seeing water being placed in an area where it is going directly to the plants. It wouldn't just be that you happen to be at the neighbor's house and you're close enough, so therefore we're going to, our code enforcement create a case. They don't bring things that have holes and gaps to us. We've had some appeals here before, and I believe that our code enforcement can make a valid case and will have a strong case if they do these types of penalties. And as far as a farmer not having water, we all have to figure out how to go with less. And if a farmer is having to take water from somewhere else to figure out how to continue doing their normal operation that's not going to be minimized due to drought, then I think that farmer made a mistake in planting a full field, knowing that we are entering into a very extreme drought. And we all need to sacrifice. This is a community issue. And pulling water from one area to bring it to another does not solve the problem at all. It makes it so that the people around you probably already don't have water if you don't have water, and now you're taking water from somewhere else where now the same thing may occur there. And I want to, I want to see the stopping of water traveling around in our community. That is my number one concern, because there is no, there's nothing to control that at this moment in time. And then we have a comment on the Zoom room, Alex Paul.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. I live in South Lake County, and I, I think my question, the essential question I have for the board is the legal cannabis grow water use clarification section. And I guess I want to understand why we would only target cannabis, legal licensed cannabis growers in this section. So for example, if I owned a winery, would I be subject to this particular provision or not? So I guess I just want to understand why that part is only focusing on legal cannabis growers, and what happens if they can't fix their well pump within the 14 days or something like that? That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My reason for focusing on that is that that's what I'm getting as far as complaints from other growers as well. And it's inside our ordinance and has been stated again and again that water trucks are not to go there. And to suddenly decide to use this emergency as a reason to now allow water trucks, I wanted to make sure and clarify that, as I do not believe that that should be the case. I forget what your second part to the question was.
Ag.
And other ag don't have those provisions in there. And in my personal opinion, we need to work to create those same level of provisions to treat everybody the same. But at this moment in time, that, those are not provisions within their ordinances. Next is Jennifer Smith.
Good afternoon, Jennifer Smith. Echoing both Michael and Alex and their comments, it does seem, it seems very subjective and punitive towards cannabis farmers. It seems, as a legal cannabis farmer, we all know that we're not supposed to be using water trucks, that there are exceptions during emergencies. And, you know, I think what's relevant to point out is these emergencies could become greater as we deal with extended PSPs. We had four days of no power in Lower Lake the other day. Generator issues, fire issues, not being able to get out to get fuel to fuel the generators, it becomes quite a cyclical issue. And I am happy to hear that you are going to perhaps look at all agricultural crops and water restrictions and the use of trucks, because if we're going to be declared ag and if we are going to be a sustainable industry in this county, we need to start leveling the playing field and quit using cannabis as a piggy bank, and then turn around and be punitive towards it. So I'd like to see this ordinance be very specific to illegal cannabis grows and find ways that we're all conserving water, but working, and not pitting agriculture against, pitting agriculture against other agricultural commodities. Let's work together as a community to make this work and not be punitive towards those that have raised their hands to be legal and pay taxes and be participants in this community. Thanks.
Thank you. Chris Pivniska?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I just want to know why code enforcement wouldn't go after the illegal growers? Why would they go after someone that's strictly hauling water, you know, who's 100% legal? I just, I just want to know why they wouldn't go after the growers that are growing illegally?
I guess my question is, why not go after both since the activity is illegal completely? That's just the way I feel. I think that it's, helping an illegal grow makes anyone helping complicit to that illegal grow. That's my opinion. But thank you for your comment. Any further comments from the board or Zoom room before we bring it back to the board? Okay, bringing it back to the board. Supervisor Pieska?
So this is about sustainability and protecting our resource. We get a lot of complaints of water trucks going to cannabis grows, and I think that's why the focus is here, legal and not legal. And so that's the issue that we're trying to address. There are products that can be used to keep the dust down. I was at a grow last week where they are applying an organic product with no residue. They were not able to test, they didn't test, the testing showed zero residue on their plants, and they can apply that product once a month rather than using water. If you're using water during this summer, during our heat waves, and given how dry our soil is, you would probably have to apply that water many times a day. So it's just not a sustainable way to manage dust on farms. And that's really what this is coming down to. If you're on a property that can't sustain a grow, then that's probably not a property that should have a farm on it going forward. This is our reality, we already discussed earlier, that we may not have a wet season. So if this, if this season took anybody by surprise and they planted too much, you know, this is a lesson learned. Maybe next year, you can't plant that much. And we, you know, we have to continue to adjust, because, because the sustainability of this resource has to be our top priority right now.
Thank you. Supervisor Simon? Oh, you went halfway up.
Yeah. Supervisor Crandall?
I think the thing to, just to add, is there's just so many illegal grows, and my focus is more, and I appreciate that there is discussion about the legal grows as well in the whereas section and what we've discussed. But the illegal grows, especially in the areas that I've been having to focus on, mainly in Spring Valley and Double Eagle, because out there, there are community growth boundaries. And when there are trucks out there delivering water to grows that really shouldn't even be happening, that's where, I've even witnessed it myself. So knowing that there's, and there's also people in the community of Spring Valley who have multiple pictures of it. So having this will help with their pictures, their reporting, and things of that nature. And then eventually, we can get to a point of identifying if there's a real use for that water. But another thing to add is that contributing But another thing to add is that contributing to those illegal grows while we're missing out on actually tagging them and pulling them, it takes a long process to do that. The sheriff had mentioned to me before that in order to get as much done that we needed to in, let's just say, the area towards the Yolo County line, he'd need at least two or three days, if not more. And so you're leaving out a lot of different grows that are just kind of sitting. And with that in tune, you got people delivering water, or even illegal. We know, we've seen and have pictures and proof of people actually pulling from the ponds. And those are the totes, and that's why I brought that up as well. So I'm just adding to the discussion and just wanted to say I thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Supervisor Simon?
Just wanted to follow up with some of the public comment that they had, you know. And I do agree, we need to look at all ag, you know, eventually here. Today we are talking about illegal cannabis. And that's really what I want to focus on, because I think there were some valid points to be made about the, you know, are permitted legal cannabis grows. We are looking to establish the industry, you know. So I would request that we do for this season. Ultimately, we do not know what's coming down for the next winter. We need to be as prepared for possible, but we may get the rain. We may not, you know, as you said, it's not a perfect science moving forward. So let's hope we're going to get what we need to. But I think we are trying to establish a legal permitted industry here. And I think it warrants that we have that conversation. And so my request is that we do, you know, make a change in this ordinance that it is for illegal grows, you know. And we work through the process maybe of adding that if you are a permitted grow, that you must be communicating with community development and your needs to continue your operations. Because we do know that they are not the only industry moving water around in this county. We do have small wineries and vintners that are probably running into the same issue of wells going dry or being able to pump out of the streams like they had previously, but the creeks went dry this year. So I think there were some valid points made by the industry that as we move forward here, my focus is on the illegal. We want to continue on those paths. I know it's a challenge. The enforcement issue too, I will say, I don't know how we're going to enforce this. That's a real challenge. We don't have the officers, we don't have the code enforcement officers to be out there. There is a lot of confusion, like I said, a lot of trucks moving around. But I would ask this board if we could entertain making some changes to... I guess it would be the language for the current disaster that we're in right now, or the current emergency. And that would be the urgency remains in effect, the emergency is something that can't be solved 14 days. We know it's a drought, but we do have legal permitted cannabis growers that are going to need, you know, help to get through this time that we're in right now. I understand each and everybody, you want to do your water permits. I know we've implemented others so they can do better and more fully comprehensive water studies before we approve some of the projects we want to move forward with. So I will put it out there that we're trying to establish an industry. It makes it challenging, but we need to have the conversation today. That's what I have.
Supervisor Scott?
You know, I agree with Supervisor Simon. We have done everything we could to make sure that we are working with permitted growers and giving them a pathway to do this legally. And I do believe we need to be working with them this year. We all kind of knew that drought was going to be coming. But again, you have to look at, it took these people probably three, four, or five years to get to this point. So when they started, there was no drought issues, but now we are in a drought issue. So if their wells do run dry, I think we need to be working with these growers to try to figure out how they can continue having their farms for this year, but maybe next year cutting their farms back. I don't know if it taking this out of this ordinance is something we should do, but we do need to have a pathway to be working with our permitted legal grows. If it's to the point of helping them or providing them be able to get the water or cutting their taxes if they have to abandon their farms. But we do need to be working with them in some way.
Thank you. Supervisor Pyska? Is that an old pen or is that a new pen?
That's an old pen.
So I'd like to make an offer and a suggestion. And Ms. Grant, if you can follow along and let me know if I'm tripping anything up. I am willing to delete the entire Section C, which is all about the legal cannabis grow and then the definition of what emergency means. There's no need to have Section C at all if that's what we get rid of. And then adding in Section 1, the sentence is, "Due to the exceptional drought that we are experiencing and the declaration of a drought emergency, all water haulers found delivering water to a property where any illegal cannabis is being grown," or "unpermitted," let's use "unpermitted," "cannabis is being grown, with the exception of properties following the rules and regulations, blah, 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 shall be held accountable for delivering water." I think just by saying "unpermitted," then that means that those who are permitted and are legal now do not fall within this category of what we're discussing. And then a little further down on Section B, with the definition of wa... Not the definition, sorry. "Water Hauler Regulations Regarding Illegal/Unpermitted Cannabis Activities." And again, "If a water hauler is found to be delivering water to a property with unpermitted cannabis activities, their activities shall be deemed in violation of this ordinance and the water hauler owner business shall receive an administrative penalty." And then I think we need to discuss the definition.
One of the issues that you still would need to correct then, sir, is you keep referring to illegal activities, but then you change to "unpermitted." So there's a consistency in an urgency ordinance in particular, though it should be in all ordinances, you want to use the same terms throughout. And when you're saying "unpermitted," then you are meaning where a county permit is required to be obtained but has not been obtained.
Would you be able to provide better guidance on those changes?
Yes. I think that if you want to continue with... It depends upon which does your board prefer. I can fix it either way. Do you want this to be "unpermitted" or "illegal grows?"
I think "unpermitted" would cover it. And then there's the exception for the adult use, which I think just pretty much says what we're looking at. What's the focus? Do you need a five-minute break to review for the definition and for the changes?
Wonderful, thank you. No, five is fine.
Five? Okay, let's go ahead and take a five-minute breaks. And we will come back at 12:28, and it's almost lunchtime. All right, let's go ahead and bring it back. And last time we left here, we were asking for Ms. Grant to go ahead and do the clarifications or the changes that we had provided for her. Ms. Grant, would you please be able to provide those changes?
Yes, thank you very much. I do notice at the very beginning that the title of the urgency ordinance needs to change.
Oh my goodness, that was my original intent. Prohibiting water hauling to unpermitted cannabis cultivation.
Cannabis cultivation sites, yes. With that change then, under the sixth whereas, water trucks have been witness dropping off water at cannabis cultivations and there are no ordinances available to curb those illegal activities of providing water at locations where cannabis cultivation occurs without the required permits. Then under number seven, "While cannabis activities can be held accountable for the illegal activity or the violating, violation of receiving water haul deliveries, water haulers," I would say, "where, while illegal cannabis activities..."
Or do we want to keep it with "unpermitted"?
Oh, you can do it that way too. It really doesn't matter because we're defining "unpermitted" down below. But "unpermitted cannabis activities can be held accountable for the illegal activity or the violation of receiving water haul deliveries." Water haulers are not currently being held responsible for taking part in the unpermitted grows. And then under Section 1, "Due to the exceptional drought that we are experiencing and the declaration of a drought emergency, all water haulers found delivering water to a property where unpermitted cannabis cultivation is occurring, with the exception of properties following the rules and regulations of the Adult Personal Use 27.3Z, shall be held accountable for delivering water to benefit unpermitted cannabis cultivation. Under A of Section 1, water hauler, any individual or commercial entity that operates a truck or tanker or other means of carrying water." Actually, "Any individual or commercial entity that operates a truck or tanker or uses other means to carry water." And then adding two definitions under A sub C, "Unpermitted cannabis cultivation means cannabis cultivation which occurs without having first obtained the required county permits, which occurs within the unincorporated area of the County of Lake without first having obtained the required county permits and state licensing." And then sub C of Section 1 would simply be deleted. And the ordinance then would go on as follows.
And I believe in sub A, sub B part A, if the water hauler is found delivering water to a property with unpermitted cannabis cultivation?
I'm sorry, yes, sorry, missed that one.
And the rest, I think, I agree with the changes. Okay, any further conversation or deliberation? Or are we ready for action? All right.
This is an urgency ordinance, so with a four-fifths vote, your board may adopt it today and it's effective immediately.
Thank you very much for that. Supervisor Simon?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to offer the ordinance with the revisions.
Ordinance has been offered. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's go on to our next item. Our next item is 6.6, our 11:00 AM item. Public hearing, appeal of vicious animal abatement case number... I want to say number twice. Number 859, located at 21852 Jerusalem Grade, Lower Lake, Brandon Strausser. Good morning, or good afternoon. It's been a long morning.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Board. My name is Jonathan Louie. I represent Lake County Animal Care and Control. I believe we're here today to report on the progress with regard to Mendocino's approval or disapproval. I am happy to report that I got final confirmation today from Richard Molinari, who is the Director for Mendocino Animal Control, that the conditions that they had have been finally met. Namely, that Ms. Matthews get the insurance for $50,000, that has been met. That they get two vicious dog permits, $100 each, which were just picked up today. That the dogs have their rabies shots that have been taken care of by Lake County Animal Care and Control. And that they complete their inspection of the kennels. And I do have confirmation from Mr. Molinari that was done and it meets their standards. Simply put, the only outstanding thing left would be for the board to approve a redemption, at which time Ms. Matthews can pay the redemption fee of $3,389 to Animal Care and Control. And at that point, take the two dogs and go to Mendocino, to her home there, where it's now been approved by their animal control.
Sounds like a happy ending to me. Thank you so much for the update. Anything further?
Not from Animal Control, John.
Anything? Actually, just want to make sure that the Brandon Strausser or representative has the chance to speak if they wish. And again, I believe everyone who's speaking today, if anyone new will be speaking, this is a public hearing. If you have not been sworn in, let us know. But I believe you have, so please go ahead and approach the microphone.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I just want to say, I want to offer my appreciation to the board and also to Animal Control and everyone, Mr. Louie and County Council's office, who has helped solve this problem, and I believe it is a happy ending. I'm Edward Savin, I don't think I said that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions from the board? All right, let's open it up for the public. Have you been sworn in for this public hearing in the past? I believe you have. So go ahead and please come on up, opening it up for public comments.
Joan Moss, I sent a Freedom of Information Act request to get all the public records and evidence available. And I sent it within 10 days. I never got a reply from either party, the Lake County or the Animal Control, though they say there's documents waiting for me at their office. They might have brought them here. Number two, I was over in Mendocino County and I called the Animal Control and the Animal Shelter and the Sheriff's Office and the Police Department. None of them knew of a hybrid wolf coming to Mendocino County. I still have a lot of questions. I've done a lot of research. I know that it's illegal to harbor and cage a wild animal. And I still say that this hybrid wolf might be more wild animal than dog. So I'm going to keep researching, but I didn't have an email at the time, I must say that, that they tried to send it to an email that was not functional. And I do have an email now. So I haven't given up my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sure that you can speak with Animal Control if they have the paperwork or if they have any information on that PRA, I think it is. But I don't know that it has, it relates directly to this item right now.
I believe, though, Animal Control determined that this is not a hybrid wolf with their DNA testing. So it's not a wolf being moved from Lake County to Mendocino County. We've already determined that.
Correct. Correct. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, you may want to have the Animal Control Director come up and just speak to that, that that has been confirmed with Mendocino County, so that the record is very clear. But you're right, Supervisor, it was spoken to at the last hearing.
Sorry, I missed part of that, we're talking... Sorry, I'm Jonathan Armis, Director of Lake County Animal Control. I missed part of that, we're discussing the wolf hybrid portion. So, correct, it doesn't meet any determination for fish and game purposes. There are some determinations, for example, from the California CVMA, California Veterinary and Medical Association. Anything over 1%, which these dogs do classify, there are certain conditions for like rabies vaccinations and that type of thing. But it doesn't meet any limits for being considered an exotic animal within state or Mendocino County as being a wolf hybrid, which would have been 50%. So there are some nuances, but they have been handled and taken care of.
And Mendocino is aware of the information provided?
Correct, yes, they have all the documentation and everything.
Okay, perfect. And your time is up? All right, last call for public comment on this item. All right, bringing it back to the board. And I believe you're looking for an action to move forward with the redemption.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Please.
There was an appeal of this order, so it would be important to inquire of all parties. Has, is the appeal withdrawn with this resolution? Or is a decision on the appeal being requested?
So at this time... Because I don't want to... I don't want it to disappear at this moment in time. Or I don't want us to take action on the appeal if then redemption is not completed. I want to make sure that we have that final step taken care of. So if the gentleman wants to pull his appeal, that is up to him.
I think your board can order the redemption at this amount and get some indication that that's acceptable from the attorney for the animal owner.
Please.
Thank you, members of the board. Edward Savin, again, as far as my understanding goes, the redemption... Edward Savin, again, as far as my understanding goes, the redemption amount is acceptable, everybody's on board. There's really nothing left but for the attorney to sing, and I won't. It's a done deal as far as all that goes, as far as I know, and I believe the redemption will be made today.
And at which point the appeal will be pulled or?
There's no appeal on our part.
Well, we have an official appeal because this is what brought it to the board in the first place.
Okay, well, we wish no appeal of anything. We're happy with the outcome, how it's evolved, so any appeal that's associated with Brandon Strausser or Tyra Matthews would be withdrawn.
That sounds good enough and official to me.
Thank you.
And it seems to please our county council as well.
And you can indicate for the record that there are no pending matters before your board, but you do approve of the redemption amount and note for the record that all parties have agreed to the payment in the amount of $3,389 and to adhere to all the conditions that have previously been testified to before your board.
Thank you for helping us. And looking for action, if somebody wishes to say so moved.
So moved.
We have a motion from Supervisor Simon and a second by Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
And she is absent from her seat at this moment in time?
Okay, and Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, all of you. Okay, and so it is 12:46, we are going to go into closed session. Closed session will consist of 8.3, public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957B, 1A, interviews of community development director, B, appointment of community development director, and then we will come back after our lunchtime, which we will do at 2:00 PM, we will, 2:30 PM?
I don't know if you need to announce the actual time. But when you're going to come back to open session?
We have to come back to open session.
Okay, what, so then, yeah, I think you could say return to open session at 2:30?
2:30, I'm thinking gives us more adequate time. Okay, so then we will return in open session here at 2:30 PM. All right, then let's reconvene our meeting. It is 2:32 PM. We will continue with item 7.2, consideration of Third Amendment to the Joint Powers Agreement creating the Lake County Community Risk Reduction Authority and authorize the chair to sign, and this is sponsored by Supervisor Simon and Supervisor Pyska. I'll let both of you take control.
Excellent. Boy, you jumped right into it. No quicker than I even got my thing open here, man. Excellent, well, this is our Third Amendment. As you know, with the Risk Reduction Authority, since it was created in 2018, we've been working to really build this organization, or the JPA, into a real collaborative effort through the county. So this year, we were able to start with the, really the CMAT, Community Mitigation Assistance Team, that came in with the US Forest Service, and, you know, the first time in Lake County or California's history that this has happened. And we were excited about that, so myself and Jessica and many other participants, we spent a couple of weeks just meeting every day, going through and really analyzing what we have going on in Lake County, what was going to be the best fit as we move forward with this organization. And as we were doing that, you know, we were going to implement some new steps, so we had had a, just previous to the CMAT starting, we had a, basically a workshop, a retreat, and we decided that we were going to be talking about expanding the open seats on the board. We wanted to really get a collaboration of everyone in the counties doing this work, which includes the two cities, the tribal nations, our water purveyors, and today is just an affirmation of that, of individuals and organizations are going to come on board, and the signatures are on there today, and what we're doing is we're just asking for approval of it as we move forward, and we're glad to be here today. It is a little bit, and they use this term to pull everything together, is a challenge, but many organizations have stepped up. This will not be the last one, I will guarantee you that. There are more folks that I myself will be meeting with, with tribal agencies or anyone else that needs to speak about it that may be on the fence, but bringing everybody together in this collaborative effort is going to really benefit Lake County residents, constituents, our firewise communities, Lake County Fire Safe Council, and all the other organizations here in the county with our government partners, working on vegetation management, forest management, but also all the other risks, which we're talking about drought, earthquake, and floods, everything else that is in the county. So I'm excited about the opportunity that we bring to you today. I'll go ahead and turn it over to Jessica.
Before Supervisor Pyska moves on, it looks like we're still telling people that we're in closed session, wondering if we can?
Matthew? There he goes, thank you.
Perfect, thank you so much. Sorry about that.
Are we good?
Yeah, we were good all along, you just had the picture up. Well, we've been live.
Okay.
You just had the wrong.
And I think we can move on, there's nobody in the boardroom, so the projector screen itself is not really of a concern at this moment in time. I just wanted to make sure that people popping in without, who maybe had it on mute, didn't still see that we were in closed session.
What's showing Zoom? This is what's showing, this is what's getting broadcast right here.
Turn it back, turn it back.
Oh, yay.
Moustache?
Why? Why?
Sorry about the interruption.
So I am so excited at the collaboration and bringing these new members onto the board. We've already learned so much from each other and new opportunities have come up to support each other, and the synergy that's, that's really starting to take place is exciting and inspiring, and I'm really happy to welcome these new members to the Risk Reduction Authority.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep, just some more clarification, too. So as we move through adding these new seats, as I said, there are seven seats at this point, there are currently three. There's myself who represents county, Jessica sits as the watershed protection district, I always get that one wrong, but I got it right today, and the chiefs of our fire departments, you know, there are five collaborative, but they have one seat and one vote at the table. And that's the way we are also adding, the city of Clear Lake has a vote, the city of Lakeport has a vote, the seven tribal nations will have one seat at the table, and the water purveyors, who have already said Diana Mann will be their representative for the water purveyors, those will be the voting members of the board. Like I said, this is just the Third Amendment, and we expect there will be more. We're going to continue growing the organization, and now that we have seven seats on there, we will really sit down and look at the priorities, implementation of the CMAT process, and all the organizational stuff that needs to come along with it. Jessica said it is an exciting time because there is a lot of grants right now that are out there that really fit into this organization, and bringing on NCO as a coordinator is really going to help us move that along. We're currently applying for the $175,000 for the coordinator's grant through the California Fire Safe Council, and there is also another grant, I think that's out there at this point is through the $100,000, and I think it is a PG&E grant that is out there, and I probably got the specifics wrong on that, but it's a $100,000 grant that we're looking to bring into the county, and we'll continue to just work on that. One other thing I think is an exciting time for this is through FEMA, some other grants will be looking at and coming up for 2022, is the BRIC, Building Resilience in Communities through FEMA, and that's going to be a big one that we can really focus on and look to make a big impact hopefully here in Lake County with everybody who's working towards, you know, well, at top of our list, fire safety, but many other things to make our communities resilient, to look at the long-term sustainability for our constituents and safety, always rolled into that.
Thank you. Supervisor Scott?
Just wanted to thank both of you for putting this together. I know on many grants that we go after with Hope Rising, they're looking for collaboration, so you're already one step ahead of everything, and we're going to be looking a whole lot more attractive with everybody here in the county sitting at one table, working on these problems, so I appreciate that and thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that's one of the things that came out of our CMAT, and I think Supervisor Simon mentioned this before, that we kind of saw ourselves as an umbrella for all of the organizations, but they corrected us and said we're an upside-down pyramid, and the Risk Reduction Authority is the bottom triangle piece that holds up and supports all of the organizations' cooperatives all through our county, and so they said you have to be that support to build the collaborative. And so now that we have that collaborative expanded, and we have a fiscal sponsor, and we have the capacity now with staff, you know, we're having weekly meetings with a giant spreadsheet on how many grants we can go after, who can do this, who can, you know, this one applies to that person, you know, we'll get letters of support so that everybody is collaborating, moving this forward, and not, we won't miss an opportunity this way.
Thank you. Any further input, comments or questions? Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, no, I think this is great, like seeing that the CMAT, you know, all of these steps that took place, we're at a better place to add some more people to this, and just even dealing with the most recent events, working with the water companies, purveyors, and then even the tribes, there's been fires on their lands as well that we've had to work collaboratively with them, so in doing this, we get out of those silos, or get away from working in silos, so.
So I have a quick question, and the reason I ask is because, and I'm sure you looked into this, there are so many different types of water districts here, it says the counties' independent, I can't seem to find it now, yeah, the counties' independent water districts, that covers private, mutual, special districts, and all?
No, you need to be, Anita can explain.
It only covers public entities, only public entities can join a joint powers agreement and become a member of the authority, though private concerns can certainly participate with assistance and often valuable information, but in this case, it would be county waterworks districts, county water districts, and community facility districts sometimes even operate as water districts primarily, so it would cover anyone who's a water purveyor, who's a public entity.
Okay, so for example, in the city of Clear Lake, which we discussed late in LAFCO, Conocti water would fit that category of being a public water purveyor, and then the Highlands would be the mutual, so that wouldn't belong, and then Golden State being a private would not belong. Am I correct in that assessment?
Yes.
And so if decisions are made for guidance or for changes, would those still be at least submitted to all the water companies for them to choose whether or not to follow what the risk reduction is looking to, I'm just kind of looking if there will still be an interaction with them, they might not be able to be part of the group, but is there still an interaction, unofficial interaction that will occur?
So we have quite a bit of collaboration at our meetings, we have many more people that participate than are just the members. We, anybody is encouraged to come, and for example, you know, we're going to have one tribal seat with a vote, but that doesn't mean all of our tribal members aren't there continuing the conversation, you know, offering up suggestions, ideas, being, you know, really participating and being part of it. That's really where the strength is with this group, is the, is the community part, because this is a community risk reduction authority. So you'll see a lot of, you know, and when we invite county staff, too, so we have special districts, we have air quality, we have a place on our agenda for staff, county staff to report, and, you know, it's just, it's amazing the things that come out of having all of these people present, you know, we didn't quite think to invite air quality until they mentioned they had some grants and some funding, so it's the synergy that comes out of all who want to participate, and anybody can participate, and we welcome participation from all levels.
No, I'm glad I asked because I wasn't quite sure what the definition of that was, and I understand the reasons for the actual definition, and I think that the direction that this committee is going, I think, is absolutely a positive direction, and I think we're already feeling some of the impact, some of the work that has been happening, and I know from the momentum that is happening and is in the committee that we're going to see a lot more coming up. And I do have one last small tiny request. That last paragraph basically says now therefore, and just kind of keeps going and going and going. It, in great detail and a lot of words, explains the membership. If it's possible, next time that we get the next amendment, which I'm sure will happen within the next six months to the next year, if it's possible to just have a list of the membership to help a layman person who doesn't want to really read through the whole thing to just kind of see, oh, that's how the makeup of the board is, one seat for fire districts, one seat for Clear Lake, it's just a convoluted way of showing a simple list, and I think for the public perspective, to really show what this is at a quick glance, I think it would help, and so if that could be available after the fact of having it written in place for the legal reasons, but then something of the kind, just looking for a simpler way for the public to be able to look into the inner workings. That is my final comment on that. Supervisor Pyska, is that an old pen or a new pen?
Oh, old pen.
Without any further comments or questions, let's go ahead and open it up to the public. If you wish to make a comment, please raise your hand.
Yes.
And seeing none, let's bring it back to the board for action.
Does she have a comment?
This one does not.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Third Amendment to the Joint Powers Agreement creating the Lake County Community Risk Reduction Authority and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Simon, second by Supervisor Pyska. Motion, roll call, please, sorry.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
That's his way of saying the meeting's going too long.
That's how we all feel. Moving on to item 7.3, addendum, this was added, I believe, Friday. Consideration of the County Administrative Officer to enter into an agreement with the Lake County Fair for a maximum compensation not to exceed $9,000 for purchase of fair admission tickets to be issued to persons receiving COVID-19 vaccines on site. CAO Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I added this after hearing that other jurisdictions were offering similar programs and also hearing from a few of you that you had interest in this. In preparing this item, I consulted with the CEO of the Lake County Fair, who was very accommodating, and what she offered, if the county would like to do this, is that first of all, they would give us the tickets at their pre-admission rate of $9 per ticket, and so they would be giving us some of their pre-sale ticket books, and for every person that gets a vaccination on site, a ticket would be torn out of that pre-sale book, and then at the end of the fair, the county would owe for all the tickets used at $9 each. The Department of Public Health, as was reported here earlier today, is poised to place a booth near one of the entrances of the fair, they'll also have to have a seating area where people wait during the monitoring period after having had the shot, and the specific hours that it will take place are still being determined. It wouldn't be the entire duration of the fair each day, it would be a period of hours, probably in the middle, the peak hours during the middle of the day, and so that's what is presented for your consideration, up to $9,000 of ARPA funds, so obviously the potential of about 1,000 vaccinations.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Any comments or questions?
Only comment is thank you for bringing this forward. I really hope people will take advantage of this, they're going to the fair anyway, so let's get vaccinated and get into the fair for free.
Any other comments?
Yeah, you know, completely support this opportunity. You know, we had a conversation earlier about another item, but this is a good return on investment, you know, it's up to the $9,000, it'll be pulled out the ticket, so we'll know exactly how many were given. It'll be pulled out the ticket, so we'll know exactly how many were given. And so, yes, thank you very much, CAO, for getting this completed, and the Public Health Department for doing the work that they're doing so we can get out there. And obviously, we want to thank the Lake County Fair for participating in this opportunity. So, thank you.
Thank you. So I get it that we want people vaccinated, and I just, I struggle with this one. Originally, my first thought was gift of public funds, but at the same time, I recognize it goes directly to the Lake County Fair, who happens to be a nonprofit. And so that somehow grays out the gift of public funds, even though in reality, it does go to a specific individual for getting vaccinated. I do want people to get vaccinated, but if $9 difference, I just, I, and I get it that the recent pass is still very emotional for me, but like, I would prefer giving this to fire victims that just got, that just lost their homes, to somebody who is making a choice not to get vaccinated. And we're trying to provide incentives for them to want to. If not going to the hospital and being hospitalized and not dying is incentive enough, I feel like this is a step taken too far, that is out of desperation and not sure that it actually accomplishes the goal we're looking to have. I also think that walking into a fair, and I mean this with the greatest of intent, is going to be a very sensitive event to go to. To vaccinate people by choice, but to give them a ticket, now we're, now we're giving them an entry into the fair, what liability do we carry for that? We need, if we're going to do this, we need to vaccinate them today. We need to sell a ticket today and get them vaccinated so that they have the vaccination that can actually protect them. Because if they get vaccinated walking into the fair, they're walking into the fair unprotected. I just, I, and also, I know we made a deal with the fair for a, I believe, a special price, and I also feel somewhat wrong. I think we should pay across the board if we're going to do this and not make a deal. Our fair needs our help. Making a deal does not truly necessarily help our fair. I think we need to go and do what other people would pay for if they went into the fair. I don't know, I just have, I have a lot of issues. I've had issues with our governor doing the lottery and giving people money to get vaccinated, or for being vaccinated. I struggle really hard with the moving away from intrinsic value of valuing life, and that we have to give you something in return. And on a personal level, I cannot support moving forward with this, even though I really do want people to get vaccinated. I think it is the best way to protect yourself. But I think this is a, ultimately, a sad way to try to get to our end goal. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, you know, I appreciate your comments, but obviously, I completely disagree. There are many different ways that people will make their decisions, and I think putting opportunities in front of folks that may be on the bubble to make that decision, this just puts one more opportunity out there. It's ultimately their decision, but I think supporting this gives a great opportunity. And I think if I, if I can clarify from CAO Hutchinson, we are just getting the tickets at a pre-sale value, correct?
Yes, at $9, which is the pre-sale price.
Which is the pre-sale value. So it's really not making a deal, because the fair is not out there, and we've having these conversations before the fair started. So, you know, it's, I think with any organization that may want to buy bulk tickets, you can get them at that fair value right now until the fair starts, from any organization in Lake County, besides the county. So.
My mistake on that.
Yeah, I just, I just want to clarify that. You know, so those are my thoughts on it. Obviously, I am in support of this opportunity here. Every opportunity to get somebody vaccinated is a step in the right direction, so that's where I stand with it.
Supervisor Scott, I'm sorry.
You know, I understand where you're coming from, Supervisor Sabatier, and I do agree with you on, we need to be getting these people vaccinated right now. Can we get these tickets on the mobile van that hopefully we approve on Tuesday and get these tickets in people's hands now? So maybe they will have some sort of immunity by the time the fair comes. Won't be full immunity.
I think we probably can, yes.
But it'll be something.
We're just going to need to make sure that the staff running the mobile van are doing the counting for us. Every ticket used, you know, needs to be representative of a shot given.
And then I would love to get a press release out, too, if this is approved today, letting people know, get vaccinated. And, you know, this is not a really large incentive, but it's something. And as Supervisor Simon pointed out, it might be enough to push somebody over the edge, because going to the fair is incredibly expensive for a family, and this might just help somebody be able to take their family to the fair.
Supervisor Pyska?
This is going to be an experiment, and I agree, it's not ideal. Of course, we want, we would hope that everyone would have gone out and gotten vaccinated right now. A lot of people will not, and, you know, under any circumstances, and, you know, that's beyond our control. I think there is a certain part of the population that's been reluctant. They've been waiting for the FDA approval, or they just haven't had time, or whatever that is. And this experiment is going to show us how effective this will be. And it is an opportunity that we can provide. People will literally have to walk past the van to get into the fair, which, you know, they may have never come that close to a vaccination site before. And maybe they'll want to drop in. It just takes a couple of minutes to get, you know, to get the shot. So I'm willing to go forward with this experiment, this great idea, this opportunity, because if, every person that participates in this and gets vaccinated at that site is a win for our county.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, I think, you know, just to follow up on another comment, in acceptance of these ARPA funds, these are, you know, there are incentive opportunities in there. So when we accepted these funds, there are $100 gift cards that were talked about, there are some other things. I obviously, CAO Hutchinson could talk more a little specific, but these, some of these most frequently asked questions and other things were, you know, were answered by the Treasury. Those, this is something that's being done, and the ability to spend these funds, that was part of the American Rescue Plan, you know, is what we were doing. So it is a part of the funds that we have accepted as a county, and I think we just need to implement everything that we can at this point to help with this pandemic as the country recovers. And we're recovering here, and we're in the middle of it. I mean, something is happening every day. So operating a business right now in this environment is really challenging, and anything we can do to help support that. Because our ultimate goal is to keep our businesses, our communities, our schools, safe, but also open. We've heard that here, and this is just part of that focus. And individuals will make their own decision, but giving them the opportunity to make that decision, I think, is important.
And I will say one last thing. I'd like to know how many tickets we do end up giving away?
Yes.
Just because we need to pay attention that we can have 1,000 people vaccinated for $9,000, and just earlier, we were talking about 100 a day, which would end up being 6,000, I believe, total, when you look at it for the course of two months?
4,000, because it would be 40 days.
Okay.
Five days a week.
So 4,000 for 200,000, like, a vastly different number. Granted, there is a cost to having staff at the fair and at the booth, but still, I would suggest is vastly different in cost. So if there is success with this, then maybe that's something to review, what other opportunities there are. So Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, I hear what you're saying, Supervisor Sabatier, but I, what I, and I also hear the diatribe that people will throw out there and project onto us for doing something like this, because it's just what it is. But I do know a lot of families that aren't getting vaccinated because someone in their family isn't doing it, so they feel kind of like they're not gonna. I think opportunities like this, it gives them more of a chance to do it, rather than just avoid it because their family member's saying so. I think that's, it's kind of like, I hate to use this example, but it's like abused people. At times, you have to deal with people that are influencing you and your family not to do it, but then you have someone, you have to catch them at an opportunity time, and this is one of those things. And I understand what you mean, it seems a little out there, but I, you know what, in other forms of government, I've had to do things very similar, and it works. It's just the way it is, so.
All right. Any further comments?
You can get your booster.
All right, let's open it up for the public. I see we do have a hands-up from Director Pomeroy.
Thank you, Board. I just wanted to make a few notes upon what you just discussed. The mobile van for vaccination is not in Lake County at this time. According to our meeting this morning, we are planning on getting it here next Wednesday, the day before the fair opens. If your Board wanted to implement giving tickets now, it would have to be at the Lower Lake Frickin' Mortar Site and/or the Public Health Department.
Thank you very much for that, and I think that we can make that work, and make sure that both those sites have that. And again, I also agree with Supervisor Scott, press release letting people know where those specific sites are in order to access the.
Now, I will say, Mr. Chair, that one thing came up in the discussions for this is, you know, are people going to get a free ticket to the fair for a proof of vaccination? And the intent really here is to drive getting people vaccinated. So this is for people that choose to be vaccinated on the spot, wherever spot that is, be it at the fair or one of the locations before the fair.
Okay, let's check again in the public. Any comments on this before we? Oh, I'm sorry, Director Pomeroy, I thought you were done, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I just wanted to note, the Health Department has clinics tomorrow and Thursday, and then down at the Optum Site, it's tomorrow and Friday. So we have four days of opportunity, unless your Board wanted to partner with pharmacies or other things outside of our actual, our agreements with the Health Department and Optum.
The agreement with the fairgrounds hasn't been drafted yet. I don't think that that will be enforced tomorrow, but probably by Thursday. I was waiting for your Board's direction to proceed. And so I think we can get it rolling by Thursday.
Okay.
So then Thursday, the clinic would be here at the Health Department, and then on Friday, it would be at the Lower Lake Optum Serve Building, at the Town Hall Building.
And just a thought, because I know at the Optum Serve, they weren't doing 12+ as they didn't have the correct vaccine in order to do so. Is 12+ in both of those venues?
12+ is at the Health Department, it is not at the Lower Lake Building. They are not inclined to do minors, they are concentrating their efforts on 18 and above. But we are doing 12+ here at the Health Department.
And since it's for the fair, just wanted to make sure that people were aware of that, so they didn't go to one clinic and find out that it wasn't there. All right, and again, public comment? Going once, going twice, bringing it back for action or further deliberation?
Mr. Chair, I authorize the County Minister Officer to enter into an agreement, the Lake County Fair, for a maximum compensation not to exceed $9,000 for the purchase of fair admission tickets to be issued to persons receiving COVID-19 vaccines on-site prior to the fair entry. My question on that is, if we're going to be doing it at other sites, should I change that wording in the motion?
Yes, you could say, and other sites in advance of the fair, I think would work.
Vaccines on-site or other sites in advance of the fair prior to fair entry.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Simon, second by Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Nay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, before you move on to your next item, I wanted to alert you that the Sheriff Ouea Stryker is on his way over with an extra agenda item. He'll be asking your Board to take up as an extra item his proclamation, his disaster declaration for the cash fire. He's just received information from the state that that is necessary for additional support to be provided to the city of Clear Lake. So he'll be here in about 10 minutes.
Thank you very much for that. Let's move on to item 7.4, Consideration Of The Following Advisory Board Appointments, Lake County Childcare Planning Council. And we have Jamie White for the Childcare Planning Council. Are there any conversations about that application? And let's open it up for the public. Any public comment on the applicant? And bringing it back for action.
Mr. Chair, I move that we appoint Jamie White to the Lake County Childcare Planning Council.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Pyska, second by Supervisor Simon. Johanna, roll call please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. 7.5, Consideration And Approval Of Joint Funding Agreement With The U.S. Geological Survey, U.S. Department of the Interior For Annual Maintenance Of The Kelsey Creek Flow Gauge Station In The Amount Of $16,890 And Authorize The Chair To Sign. And with us, we have Deputy Director Deli Gionis.
Yes, good afternoon, Chair and supervisors.
Uh-oh, uh-oh, your vocals are very robotic. I don't know if you want to.
Can you come down?
Yes, I'm running out.
It's going to be so much better. It's like strep throat with a robot.
Mr. Chair, would you like to go back to public comment before you, excuse me, public input?
You're right that I have not hit the public comment. We kind of zoomed right over that, and I apologize.
Or you have a couple of consent items you pulled.
Well, I mean, we have to open up public input, so let's do that. And I apologize to the public for not doing so earlier. We kind of moved things around and shifted earlier in the morning, and that one got left behind. So let's go open it up for the public. Any public input on anything that is not on our agenda? And again, I apologize for making it happen at 3:00 PM. Let's go ahead and close public input. Let's go ahead and take up item 5.1, Approve Agreement Between The County of Lake and Visit Lake County, California For The Provision Of Administrative Services In The Amount Of $78,000 From July 1, 2021 To June 30, 2022 And Authorize The Chair To Sign. So I pulled this item not to discuss the substance of the item, but within the document agreement, it talks about pulling money out of the 2021 budget. I just wanted to make sure that we sign an agreement with the appropriate budget year.
Would you be so kind as to call my attention to that page where that is?
I am going to try my best.
Let's see. So I have Patrick Sullivan in the Zoom as well, our tax administrator, if there's any question.
Right here on number three of page five, County Responsibilities. County will forward $78,000 from its TOT revenues as designated by the Board of Supervisors as part of the 2021 budget.
Yeah, that would be a typographical error. So it should say 2122 budget.
Correct. That's the only change that I just wanted to make, make sure that we were in the right budget year. Other than that, I support what the TID has been doing and will continue to be doing. I did ask for a budget to be submitted to me, so I can look over how that money is intended to be spent. And I hope that next time that we do this, if we can get a budget provided to us, because the idea that it says programs and activities is a little vague as far as what exactly we get out of the $78,000 that we would be committed to.
We do have a standard provision that we use in many of our contracts that requires, depending on what it is, requires the contractor to provide a budget. We can insert that language in a future iteration of this one.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Let's go ahead, are there any comments from the Board? Let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Any comments on item 5.1? And let's go ahead and bring it back for action.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the contract between the County of Lake and Visit Lake County, California For The Provision Of Administrative Services In The Amount Of $78,000 From July 1, 2021 To June 30, 2022 And Authorize The Chair To Sign.
Second.
With amendment.
With amendment.
Second.
So we have a motion from Supervisor Pyska, and a second by Supervisor Simon. Roll call please. Johanna? Roll call, please. Johanna.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I have a request to reopen public input. I understand that someone had their hand raised, and you just barely missed it. And so it's up in the Zoom room now. It's Angela Dow.
And public input for item 5.1, or just public input, public input?
Public input.
Okay. And go for it.
Hi, thank you so much for... I'll be brief. I just wanted to make the board aware, as well as any of the public, about two educational outreach opportunities coming up that Water Resources is sponsoring. And I could share my screen for one of those. You can see that. So we have a free webinar coming up this Friday, August 27, at 12:00 noon, that's talking about Primrose. So if you've been around the lake at all, you've probably seen this invasive plant around the shoreline. It's covering a lot of the channels right now. It's a big nuisance, and we're getting a lot of questions about it. And I just wanted to put all that information together in one spot, present it to the public, and have a little Q and A, so people can get all their information right away about that. And so if anybody's interested, it'll be available via Zoom, and I have the meeting information here. And then we also have it posted on our website. So that's one event we have. The next one we have is... Did the screen switch? Can you see the next one?
We can see the next, yes.
Is that correct? Can you guys see that? The Water Quality Wednesday?
We can see it.
Okay, great, thanks. So this is a partnership presentation for Water Quality Wednesday, presented by the County of Lake, Water Resource Department, Public Health and Special Districts. We have two presentations for this. So we did come to the board to talk about Sinobacteria in Clear Lake and outreach, and that was a few weeks ago. But this is more about drinking water quality and Sinobacteria impacts, which we're getting a lot of questions about. I'm sure you guys are as well, with the low water levels and the drought conditions. And so this is an opportunity to learn from two folks that do work with the lake. We have Rachel Kennard. She just did her master's research thesis on Sinotoxins and Drinking Water impacts. So it's a wealth of knowledge there. And then we'll have Sarah Ryan from Big Valley EPA to talk about monitoring from private drinking water systems contaminants for some of those symptoms and systems, and then also to answer any questions to the public. So I just wanted to take a moment and let you guys know about those opportunities. And all this information is available on our website, and they can always call us at 707-263-2344 to get more information. And we hope the public participates in that. Thank you so much again for giving me a few minutes to make notice of these events coming up.
Thank you so much, Angela Dow. And I was really hoping before you left us that you would say "Lake" our page. I was really, really hoping.
Lake us on Facebook. At Lake County Water. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Sheriff, I believe you need this to be done now, or can you wait? Is this a step in the process to continue for activities today? It's just that we invited Deputy Director Deli Giannis. We had already begun. Just want to kind of check in and respect both your times.
I'll stand behind her and tap my foot.
We're gonna have to see this. And so we had already begun. This is item 7.5, again, consideration approval of joint funding agreement with the U.S. Geological Survey, U.S. Department of the Interior for annual maintenance of the Kelsey Creek Flow Gauge Station in the amount of $16,890 and authorize the chair to sign. Deputy Director, it's your turn.
Yes, we're good to go. Awesome. Thank you so much, Chair, for having me, and thank you, Board of Supervisors. As stated, we are bringing to you for authorization and approval of our joint funding agreement, the JFA, between us and the U.S. Geological Center for the annual maintenance of our Kelsey Creek Flow Gauge Station in the amount of $16,890 and authorize the chair to sign. So this is a JFA that we have with the U.S. Geological Center Society, excuse me. As you know, it's important for us to maintain and monitor our stream gauge. This is being one of our priority streams that we, you know, utilize this data to ensure that we're doing proper floodplain management, planning, et cetera, water quality sampling, whatnot, have you not. So with this JFA, JFA, excuse me, we allocate $16,890, and that is on behalf of the Lake County Water Resource Department and the USGS. They pay $7,340. So this would be for the period of October 1, 2021 through September 30, 2022. And again, this station provides real-time data and historical data that we use during our floodplain management. So before we can finalize this JFA, we are bringing this to the board for approval authorization, so we can move forward with doing the work that we do.
Perfect. Thank you so much for the presentation. Any comments or questions from the board? All right, let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Any comments or questions from the public? And let's bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve for the approval of a joint funding agreement with the U.S. Geological Survey, U.S. Department of the Interior, USGS, for annual maintenance of the Kelsey Creek Flow Gauge Station in the amount of $16,890 and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
Supervisor Simon with the motion, and second by Supervisor Pyska. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Board.
Your voice sounded like somebody was scratching the chalkboard on your voice. It was very rough. So thank you so much for coming down here.
More AOL signing on.
We were getting the facts. All right, Sheriff, I believe you have an extra item for us. If you can present to us the reason that we should be taking this up as an extra item, and then we can get to the substance.
Help me drop something.
Interesting stuff. The Colonel's secret.
It's ketchup and mayonnaise.
This extra item is ratification of a local emergency. This came up after the posting of this agenda, as recently as several minutes ago. It needs to be heard and ratified before the board is in session for their next regular session.
Okay. Is there any...
I should say heard and considered for ratification.
Okay.
I move that we approve the extra item.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Missed it last time. Thank you, guys, keeping me on track. Let's open it up to the public. Any comments on reasons to make this an extra item? And bring it back. We have a motion from Supervisor Pyska, I believe.
Second.
And a second from Supervisor Simon. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sheriff, the floor is yours for the item.
Thank you.
As your board is aware, on August 18, the cash fire started within the city of Clear Lake and spread to the county jurisdiction. The fire resulted in destruction of over 180 vehicles, 57 dwellings or homes, and 90 other structures, and caused the immediate forced evacuation of over 1,600 people, including two schools. Since that time, the fire has been contained, and the recovery efforts are in progress. The recovery efforts are extensive, including a significant threat to environmental conditions, including the Cache Creek waterway. The hazardous material that has caused within the watershed area of this fire poses significant environmental damage, not only to the Cache Creek area, but to the agricultural lands that are served by the water flow from that area. In consulting with Cal OES at the beginning of this fire, the question was initially posed, does this rise to the level for the response to the fire of a county emergency? Because the fire was actually controlled fairly quickly and stopped. However, the emergency remained within the city. Finally, received an answer today from Cal OES indicating that it would be prudent to issue a county emergency proclamation in addition to the Public Health Emergency Proclamation, that was ratified earlier today in the board meeting, to support the city's efforts in recovery. This was spurred in large part today after a meeting with Cal OES and the city officials in the Burn area. After considering the public health emergency and the abilities of the public health emergency to trigger any aid programs, I don't think the question was ever adequately answered. And it was, like I say, on the advice of Cal OES, it was deemed prudent to do this to maximize the opportunity to be included in the request for inclusion of the Presidential Disaster Declaration that the governor issued. As your board is aware, today, I sent a letter to the Director of Emergency Services requesting that the governor add Lake County to the list of eight counties that were included in the Presidential Disaster Declaration. While this fire is small in scope compared to the other fires that are burning hundreds of thousands of acres throughout the state of California, it's huge an impact to the communities that we serve. The recovery efforts exceed the ability of the city to respond. In response to that, the county has allocated resources from environmental health, from County OES, and from Department of Social Services. The response efforts will exceed the capacities of the county agencies, and the request for state assistance has been made, and it is believed that ratification of a countywide local emergency will assist in the process of getting that done, and hopefully ultimately in the process of seeking adequate reimbursement for the appropriate jurisdictions. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and staff's recommendation would be that the board ratified this proclamation of a local emergency and direct either OES staff or county staff to prepare an appropriate resolution for signing by the chairperson of the board or the board in total.
Thank you so much, Sheriff. Any questions or comments? Supervisor Simon?
I just want to thank you for continuing to work with, obviously, the city and all the agencies through this, Sheriff. You know, obviously, we know how devastating this was, even though it was only 87 acres. I want to thank CEO and everyone else that responded, obviously. You know, no loss of life was a great achievement, you know. So I just want to say that with all the agencies, and I want to thank your office for bringing this today, because I completely support it. And anything we can do to collaborate and help the other cities that are affected, like disasters like this, anything we can do, we need to continue working together and in cooperation. I know it's challenging throughout some of these times, and things, you know, get a little hectic in the beginning, but we all come together as a community, as a county, and as cities in the end. And this is just one more step forward. So thank you very much, Sheriff.
Thank you.
I do have a couple of questions and a comment. First, my comment, I really appreciate, I heard this morning about the governor's request for the federal declaration as well. Wasn't sure how wide of a scope. It sounds like there's eight counties. Really appreciate you reaching out, trying to add us to that, because that would be phenomenal for the ability to do the cleanup, and also what does the recovery look like. So I want to thank you for doing that. I think that is, that's been everyone's hopes, that we can go up the ladder and get the help that we really need. I do have a question. I'm happy to see that we're doing the declaration today. Is anything else going to help us? I know that I've reached out to Yolo County Flood Control, seeing how they have the creek and also the water rights. Is there anything that would be helpful coming from them to also help support what our asks are to our governor and to the feds?
I think any form of support from Yolo County Flood Control District, they have a very significant vested interest in making sure this gets cleaned up appropriately. I think that any support from them in support of these requests that we're making for inclusion would be helpful. As these things go on, other things to be considered are this also impacts some historic tribal lands that involve, I believe, traditional Coine Nation territory and possibly some Elam territory.
Middle Town Ranch area also.
Yeah, there's some significant archaeological features of the area that need to be protected. We've reached out to the city. The city has a working relationship with Coine Nation. I have a working relationship with Coine Nation and Elam Tribe on identifying any measures that need to be put in place to ensure that those tribal artifacts are protected and treated with dignity. And we're also exploring any opportunities there might be for additional funding to help us get through this along those. So what I would say, anything and everything should be out there and open for consideration. We've reached out to the public. My understanding is that LARCA has generated several thousand dollars to assist with this, something to try to get us through. Our main concerns right now, obviously, the fire is not the main concern. Now it's the recovery efforts, and that's what's posing the challenges that we have. An update on some of the progress that's been made out there. They've been able to put an emergency patch in for the water district that serves one of the home parks that lost its water source. So we were actually out there when they turned the water on this morning for those folks to be able to hopefully get them home. I don't know if they tested it yet to see if it worked, or if there's any boil water notices or anything like that. But I would say that the challenges that have come up are probably going to be the biggest logistical and financial challenges is going to be that cleanup, and then finding housing for the folks that have been permanently displaced. It's my understanding, I don't have the census count, but my understanding is that it's a high percentage of elderly population. There's a significant amount of elderly people, some disabled veterans, and the city is actively looking for ways to get them patched into some transitional housing, and hopefully get it pointed in the direction of a more permanent solution. So what my ask would be, from government agencies, whether it's Yolo County Flood Control District, all the way to people that are involved in the community, if you have a charitable heart, now's the time to open up with some monetary donations. I'll say that. I hate to sound like I'm fundraising or anything, but truly, those monetary donations are the best assistance. Rather than donating in-kind donations, clothing, and items like that, they become very problematic, as we've seen in years past. And those are the types of things that I think will help us get through this. It's going to be a very, obviously, speaking with the city manager today, it's going to be a very challenging time. There's no way to make this an easy process. There's no way to make this a pleasant process. It's gonna... I can't use the words that I used with him here, because we're in a public format, but it's not going to be pleasant. But the benefit for the city is, is that he's got a wealth of knowledge from a lot of people that have been through these things, that we're able to help out, provide guidance, provide assistance as we can. And again, I think the assistance that's needed exceeds any capacity that we have here as a local county government, and we need to call in the feds or the state for the assistance. And our hope is, and Cal OES's hope, is that this will go to support those efforts.
Awesome. Thank you very much for that report.
It was a long answer, sorry.
Yeah, no, but it was a good report and a good update as well as to what's happening down there as far as bringing back the infrastructure to allow people to go back to their homes safely and comfortably. Any further comments or questions? Did I open it up for the public yet?
I can open it up for the public. I'll go after. It's okay.
Go for it.
Well, I appreciate the report, Sheriff. You know, you mentioned that this is for the communities that we serve, and I'm just hoping, you know, we continue to move forward collaboratively. We are in this together, and I appreciate that we're doing this declaration and anything that we can do to support the city of Clear Lake as they move through this really difficult time.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Any comments from the public? And then bring it back to the board for action. You don't have a resolution in front of us, so there's no action.
I don't. That was one of the two things that I asked for, one, that the board consider ratifying this proclamation and directing county staff to draft an appropriate resolution, and we'll work with county admin.
So what you can do is mirror the action you took on 4.1, where you ratified the local health emergency. It's the same process, and we're going to attach a sheet to the Sheriff's OES Director's proclamation.
So basically, ratification of local county emergency by the Lake County Sheriff?
Declared today.
Lake County OES Director for the cash fire.
Just a motion. So moved.
Okay.
Sorry.
It was right second.
I didn't see your pen up.
Motion by Supervisor Pyska, second by Supervisor Simon. Roll call, please. Johanna.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will work with county admin to craft an appropriate resolution. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll try to have it done, well, depending on when we get out of here, but to close the business today. That's the intent.
Okay, I believe we finished that. All we have left is 5.4 in our calendars. So let's go ahead and take up item 5.4. And Director Metcalf, there you are. So first, A, waive the formal bidding RFP process pursuant to Lake County Code, Section 38.2, as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods or services. B, approve the agreement between County of Lake and Kingsview Corporation for support services for state mandated cost reporting for fiscal years 2021, 2020, '21, 2021, '22, for a contract maximum amount of $120,000, and authorize the board chair to sign the agreement. I just wanted to kind of discuss the reasons that I pulled this item. And in the memo... I just wanted to kind of discuss the reasons that I pulled this item and in the memo, I just, and I apologize, I failed to discuss this with Director Metcalf before this meeting, but in the memo it states that Kingsview is the, what does it say? That it is part of Cerner or something, and then later on, it says LCBHS is not aware of any other entity in California who provides the same scope of caliber of work, and in my opinion, that's what the RFP is meant to do, is ensure that we are aware that others who are able to do so, then we can start to compare and contrast as to who should be doing this. And so, that was my one. And obviously, for 2021, I feel stuck. It's unfortunate, I think that we just have to pay a bill, and so, that's not here nor there, but for 2021, '22, I feel that we do need to go through the RFP process. And then, in the agreement itself, there was something that was of concern, and it was the fact that after the agreement is over for two years, then it's on a month-to-month basis, which means that we don't come back to us, we don't redo the RFP process, and I felt like it was too binding with the same company, kind of like a forever clause, rather than a limited amount of time, which that's what I'm used to seeing on these, and the agreement is not opening right now on my computer and I apologize for that. But I was wondering if Director Metcalf could respond to that.
I have, I have a lot to respond to around this. First, I don't understand why things end up on the consent agenda and then get pulled for discussion. I know we're trying to save taxpayers' monies, but this costs money for us. I've got my administrative deputy director and my fiscal manager hanging out waiting to discuss this item, which right now, just today, probably cost us, oh, let's say, $500. So, this contract, yes, you're right, we are bound to pay for services rendered in last fiscal year and it's because we had to do a budget transfer in the 11th hour to make sure that we had monies to pay for this, but I guess what this board doesn't understand, and maybe I hadn't been clear enough in my almost five years in this position, is that we, I shouldn't say we, I inherited a department that was way behind in filing reports, financial reports to our funders. This entity helps us, get us caught up because of my own internal struggles in filling positions to get people in these positions that can help us fix these fiscal problems. This is a very time-sensitive contract and I will fight tooth and nail with you, Board Supervisors, to approve this contract because I am trying to get this department fixed and this contract, if approved, will allow us to increase our billable rates, which is a great thing, that will help me sustain my department. And so, I, and I have my, as I said, I don't know if my administrative deputy director is here or my fiscal manager, but this is a vitally important contract that needs to be approved and I'm sorry I'm not there in the board chambers on bended knee, but I'm just, I'm a little taken aback by the fact that the board memo that was submitted wasn't sufficient enough to explain why we're doing what we're doing, and so, I'm asking you, Board Supervisors, what more do you need? Because when I see something on a consent agenda, I kind of rest assured that, okay, it sufficed, and here it gets pulled and I'm in a bit of a quandary about why, and this isn't the first of my consent agenda items that get pulled. And as I mentioned earlier, when I have my staff on standby, this is costing money. So, I'll stop there and I don't know if any of my other staff wants to chime in, but it's a little frustrating, to say the least.
Well, I'm going to respond to that before your staff goes on it, and I'm going to be honest, frankly, I don't like the tone of the conversation. My job here is to check everything that comes on the agenda, and if you think that things on the consent agenda are meant to be rubber stamped, then this is not at all the right idea. We are to look at everything that happens. You say you're trying to catch up, but you're giving us something that happened last year that I'm forced to have to say yes to because we've already provided the services for. I'm a little upset here with the tone and the rhetoric. If you say you don't know what else is available, it does not fit what we just discussed in recreating our RFP process. The RFP process is meant to ensure that the public's money gets used accordingly. If you don't have time because you need it today, then this is late and should have been here two weeks ago so that we could have discussed it. I am very frustrated with the level of conversation that's happening. I'm actually embarrassed that we're having this conversation in a public fashion, but this is not, in my opinion, this is not acceptable. If you disagree with me, there could have been much different words shared, but the words you share are telling me that I should just rubber stamp it because you told me to. That is not true. That is not going to happen.
And no, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying because we are still dealing with issues.
And we need to, we need to stop looking in the past and blaming the past. We're here today and we're moving forward. I also just got here three years ago, but I am not going to look at my predecessor and say, "Sorry, it's because of that." We have to be able to move forward appropriately.
I get that, but the issue is, these are dollars and cents that reports and items were submitted years ago before I was here and we are having to deal with the ramifications of that. That's what I'm trying to say. I'm not trying to blame anybody, I'm fully accountable for this, and that's why I'm having this conversation with you and the board, because these are issues that I and a lot of my staff inherited, and I'm sorry that it's not comfortable, but we're still trying to work through this, and this is the best we can do to make it work, and if you have a better...
Do you have a response for the, I don't know if your staff has a response, but I had two questions. One question was the contradiction of the memo, that it seems to be a unique thing, but then says we're not aware. Is it true that we're not aware or is it absolutely 100% sure that it's unique? Because that's part of the documentation that we're requesting to have with these things. I don't see documentation, just words in a memo. And second was asking about the part of the agreement that says that it continues month-to-month in perpetuity rather than stopping after the 21, '22 budget year. I was wondering if I can get an answer on that. I'd like to move on.
Director, would you like me to address a portion of that?
Yes, Elise, if you would like to.
Thank you. Apologize, apparently my countenance is somewhat washed out. So, with regard to the services that Kingsview provides, my apologies, the language in that memo should have been stronger and it should have stated that there is no other vendor that can provide this service, and as Chair, you noticed, that's because Kingsview is an intermediary between our EHR, Electronic Health Record, Cerner, and us. So, they provide that technical assistance to us and probably dozens of other California counties who also receive support with regard to cost reporting, and all of that comes out of our electronic health record. So, that is truly unique, and I would also just like to add that in the future, we will be exploring an RFP for a new electronic health record. I know that's not germane to this item, but just it may be helpful for you to know that that's something that we're taking a much more active interest and role in, recognizing that RFP is the best way to get, for lack of a better way of phrasing it, the best bang for our buck and to best utilize taxpayer monies. As to the length of the contract on a month-to-month basis, Chrissy, I'm wondering if you have any insight or could shed light on that particular aspect?
The goal of this contract is to get us completely caught up, which they've been working since 2019 to get us caught up. They are currently on the last year to catch us up, and then thereafter is because they did the contract, or they did the cost report, is to follow us through with the state and the audits. So, now that we're caught up, the state has to catch up with us, and so, they will follow us through with those audits as the state catches up, and then the plan is for them to train our staff so that our staff knows how to do cost reports and we no longer have to contract our cost reports out. So, that's where the month-to-month basis comes from, is getting our staff trained so that we can internally do these cost reports.
And on top of that, once, and thank you, Chrissy and Elise, for helping me out, and once we get caught up, we will be able to increase our billable rates. I think the board knows this, that Behrill Services is kind of like a corporation for all of our billable services, but we can't increase our billable rates until these fiscal cost reports are in order and caught up, and so, this is a very time-sensitive contract because it will allow us to raise our billable rates, to bring more money back into the county, and I apologize to Board Supervisors if I failed in explaining how this worked in previous meetings, because I know we've had a lot of meetings about this, but this is, this contract is vitally important to us to get us caught up to where we need to be, and Chair Sabatier, yes, no, I'm not blaming what happened in the past, but unfortunately, this is what we're stuck with, and we are trying our best to clean it up, and I, gosh, I'm going on five years in this position and I thought it would have been cleaned up by now. I had no idea the depth and how expansive this was to get things cleaned up, so this is why we are here now, and we need, we need you, Board Supervisors, to help us approve this contract, to help us get to where we need to be, because we are accountable and we want to be accountable. I just, I don't know what else to say.
Director Metcalf, I've wanted to help you do that, but one thing you have to understand is at any given time, anything can be pulled from the agenda, not just by us, but by the public as well, and I've heard them ask about things like this. Whether or not this is actually something that is legit and we know it, they don't understand it. So, at times, if we don't ever, if we don't pull this, and I don't think Supervisor Sabatier is doing this on purpose, and I definitely wouldn't be doing it on purpose, it's because there's interest in it and there's a lot of people talking about these things, and that's why I've noticed it's happened frequently and it's getting better. We're hearing less of it because of this activity, and so, I understand you're frustrated and I get it, and I, you know, usually won't really say anything, I just kind of feel like when you mentioned the whole board, you're including me, and I, you know, that's not where we're at with this. So, we understand and we're there with you because, of course, in the last four years, I've, well, three years I've been on here, and so, we're trying to do the same thing. But you mentioned the board, and so, you know, got to let you know that it could be pulled anytime, you know.
Any further comments from the board? Supervisor Scott?
Just wanted to add, I know, Todd, when you stepped into this position, you had a lot of cleanup to do, and it's exciting to see that maybe we can see the light at the end of the tunnel. So, I definitely approve this contract and I'm excited to be moving forward and having you be able to look at your rates and be able to bill at the rate you should be billing. So, it's exciting to be moving forward. I know it took almost five years, but we're there, so.
Well, we're getting there.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, and, you know, as far as moving forward, you know, it's been made very clear that any item can be pulled off of there. I know we all need to do our parts, we have questions to communicate, you know, that's why it comes out on, you know, Friday and we have an opportunity to look at that and then talk directly with our directors also on discussions, but I do just want to be very clear, and, you know, the same thing as you were saying, getting a message across to the board, you know, we do hear you loud and clear because we do have these discussions and sometimes heated, but we usually move forward with the opportunity to make our constituents' lives better as we do that. So, I just want to be very clear back to your department and all of the departments that we are making a change. For years, I think that, you know, the RFP process, we kind of moved away from it a little bit because it's, yes, it does add work, but there is a change. We want to see these contracts to be sent out so we can make sure that we are doing our due diligence, both at the board here, but also our directors as we move forward, and hopefully that message is coming across that the year 2022, some changes need to be happening, so I just want to say that very clearly.
Thank you. Seeing none left, let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Phone 6205.
I actually had a comment about a previous item that you've moved on from. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry about that if we missed you. Thank you. And let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code Section 38.2 as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods and services.
Second.
A motion and a sec, a motion by Supervisor Scott and a second by Supervisor Simon. Roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Nay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agreement between County of Lake and Kingsview Corporation for Support Services for State Mandated Cost Reporting for Fiscal Years 2020 and '21 and 2021 and '22 for a contract maximum amount of $120,000 and authorize the board chair to sign the agreement.
Second.
I have a motion from Supervisor Scott and a second by Supervisor Simon. Roll call, please.
All right. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And...
Mr. Chair, we have a request to reopen 4.2, if you would please, and I'll explain why.
Oh, goodness.
Sorry.
No worries.
It's the day that won't end.
We're all about the spaghetti loops today, just moving things around. All right, motion to reopen item 4.2?
So moved. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Scott, second by Supervisor Simon. Roll call, please.
Okay.
Sorry, Johanna.
Trying to crack the ball this. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Sorry, Johanna, I know we were moving fast from the last item, and so, if you didn't catch it, we reopened 4.2, and the reason for that reopening is Director Pomeroy has been in touch with her contacts regarding this item, and she is now advised that the contract that will make this happen, the mobile vax operation, the contract will be between OptumServe and the state. The county will be required to pay for it, but there will be no contract, and so, the approval that you already gave for the use of ARP funds should suffice. There was an expectation earlier that staff would return to you with an agreement to ultimately approve. That won't be happening, so I wanted to share this information with you and make sure you're still good with the approval given thus far.
Okay, looking for, thank you very much. Looking for comments on this?
Just for clarification on that, did we make a motion on that?
Johanna, do you recall what action was taken on 4.2?
I was going to do a couple days and then we...
That's right, I think we did a consensus.
I don't think we actually got the motion to approve it at that point.
Yeah, you authorized me or Denise Pomeroy to do up to our authority for a few days and then come to you with an agreement, and so, since that isn't happening... And so since that isn't happening...
Are there any further questions or comments about the program before looking at a motion to approve? And let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Any comments on this item? And coming back.
So Anita stated, a good way to say the motion. And I will try again. This will be a motion to approve the program moving forward pursuant to the details that the CAO has just stated to your board and that were further discussed in the earlier discussion of the item today.
And no more than $200,000?
That was part of the details, but yes, you can, you can add as many details as you like.
So moved.
Second.
A motion from Supervisor Scott and a second by Supervisor Simon. Roll call, please.
Okay. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe we're on 7.1. And if so, let's start with Supervisor Pisca for Supervisor's weekly calendar travel and reports.
Well, I'll just give a little bit of report about the sheltering operations with the cash fire and we really want to thank all the volunteers that came out, the Red Cross and Capit Charities and everybody that supported our residents in their time of need. They had a lot of really wonderful support from Animal Care and Control, bringing food and crates and support for the people with animals. You know, we live in a county where almost everybody has an animal and so caring for the animals is just as important as caring for the people, particularly when, when their animals and their pets are the only thing that they have left after a fire. So I really, I give a heartfelt thanks to everybody that pitched in and worked together to support our community. So tomorrow, I will be doing a tour with Supervisor Simon in South County, then meeting at the Middletown Firehouse around noon to meet the team from Rebuild North Bay, which is now after the fire. They are delivering fire extinguishers and other materials, preventative materials to the South Lake Fire Protection District. And then I'll be taking that team to meet Supervisor Sabatier and officials from the city of Clear Lake to, to talk about strategies on how, and long-term recovery for that, for that community. Thursday is when we're going to have the COVID vaccination setup, vaccination site set up at the Kelseyville Apartments. It's targeting the farm working community, but anybody can come and get vaccinated at that site from 3:00 to 7:00 and I will be there as well. Friday, Friday morning at 9:00, we'll have our Grants Best Fit Meeting, which is led by NCO and our Coordinator for the Risk Reduction Authority. We're meeting with the team to go over our extensive list of grant opportunities and figure out where the best fits are for those. We have a kickoff meeting with Chandler Asset Management and then in the afternoon, the Roadmap Task Force. And I don't have my meeting with CAO Hutchinson on the day morning on my calendar, but I know it's there.
Yep, it's to be there. It's... It probably was taken off because at one point you weren't going to have a board meeting that day.
Oh, right.
The following day, but let's put it back on.
That's okay. Let's do it because we will be back here next Tuesday for a board meeting.
All right. Thank you very much. Supervisor Scott?
Tomorrow, I have a 1:00 meeting with the ACT team, working on bringing a youth group here to Lakeport to understand how government works. So that's pretty exciting. 2:00, first five commission meeting from 2:00 to 5:00. And then on Thursday, I have a Hope Rising Governing Board meeting at 9:00. I'll be doing a tour at 11:00 in my district. At 3:00, Health Services Mental Health Advisory Board from 3:00 to 5:00. And on Friday, I will be going to Supervisor Crandall's district to look at some roads up there. On Saturday, I will be on KPFZ with Mr. Morehead, talking about all things Lakeport. And then Monday, just preparing for Tuesday's meeting.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, a meeting just popped up for me too. Excellent.
Well, I was rescheduling those meetings.
Getting populated as we speak.
Obviously finishing up the board meeting today. I too just want to talk, you know, obviously about the cash fire. I said it earlier, the excellent response that we had from, you know, all of our first responders to make sure that there was no loss of life during that fire was an incredible accomplishment to work together in that. That was quick moving, you know, was on a meeting, which I turned over to Supervisor Sabatier, our abandoned vehicle abatement meeting, and felt like needed to be there on-site. So to witness, you know, all of that and to see just more devastation happen to us, obviously, just makes me happy to serve and an opportunity to help people. You know, from sheltering, you know, which was, yes, this time moved around, but all the organizations, you know, our county OES, you know, our CEO, our sheltering teams, everybody worked together to make sure that we got the people out and had them, had a place to go. It is trying times during a disaster, you know, there's always opportunities where people try and separate us or, you know, be negative about things, but the ultimate goal is working together to make sure that our constituents are safe, out of the danger area, and then looking at the long-term recovery. I myself am always focusing on that. It's not about me. Can have an opinion one way or the other, or the tribe, if it's sheltering folks, yeah, have your opinions, but we'll always be here to serve our community and to do the right thing. And it's one thing to armchair quarterback, but it's another thing to get out there and to help people instead of just talking and writing things. So I just want to be very clear about that and we will come together. Some people do have feelings or anger or one way or the other. It's proof in actions, not words. And as we move forward, we've done a board today, as a board today, we come together as county always and we'll continue to do that. I hate to be on a little bit of a soapbox here, but that's just the way it is. And you guys know me, I may not be the best at email or Facebook and all that stuff, but you can always call me, get ahold of me, but taking care of our constituents for each and everybody in this county, this room on this board is number one. And we do that in partnership with the two cities, the tribes and anybody else in the county. So just want to be very, very clear about that and the intentions is always about helping people. Today, we'll finish up the board meeting and hopefully no other meetings pop up tonight and I don't have it on there, but it might. You know, tomorrow, I know we had an ETF economic development that has been canceled, so I'll be touring with Jessica tomorrow. There are a couple of events, you know, it sounds like that are coming up that I was just made aware of, so we'll do that. I've also scheduled a 2:00 meeting with, for the RRA, finally with Scotts Valley Band and Pool Minions that had some questions, so I got that on the calendar. I'm going to take care of that tomorrow afternoon. On Thursday, don't have much on the calendar on Thursday. In the afternoon, I know there's been an invitation in Behavioral Health, Mental Health Advisory Board. I'm going to attempt to do that, but I will let you know right now too, also juggling and only everything else that's on my plate, but hey, we're trying to have football here in Lake County for the kids, so also putting that on there. On Friday morning, we have, there is the Grants Meeting that's going to be happening with the RRA. I'm going to try and join that because I'm excited about some of the opportunities that are coming down for the Risk Reduction Authority. And then I have my taping, I got it at the wrong time here, but at 12:00 on Friday, I got something, I'll be in Clear Lake doing some taping with that. And then we'll see Saturday and Sunday, what happens. Most likely, you know, just working through the cash fire, there's a lot of stuff going on. As you know, the extra item that came up today, I imagine some things are going to be happening quickly now that we've done our part as a county and really put those motions, those wheels in motion to help recover. Monday, I have the meeting with Carol, the CAO. And then Tuesday, what time is the meeting starting on Tuesday? Is it 9:00 AM? Do we start at 9:00?
It is our regular time.
So yeah, we filled our calendar up, which we knew we always could, so we'll get that done and take care of that. But we also have later on that afternoon, right? That's the redistricting, public hearing meetings, which are very important as we're going through this process.
Yeah, it's within the context of that meeting, but it does have a set time.
Yes.
And we have a few other agenda items due.
Yep, absolutely. Okay. Right. And with that, that's all I have today.
All right. Thank you. Vice Chair Crandall?
Yeah, so first off, I want to empathize with, with you all and give my deepest, you know, care for you all in this situation and, you know, with the, with the fire, the cash fire that was, it's tremendous to, for people to have to deal with, with losing homes. And, you know, in Clear Lake Oaks, we had four people lose their home and when someone looks you in the eyes and says, "I don't have anything," it's a really, it's really tough. It weighs on you. So, you know, going over there and looking at the site, you know, it's just, yeah, so I'm glad that we're getting some things done to try to help those families and help the people. And, you know, like you said, Supervisor Simon, we will, we will work together to get things done to help everybody. And so I just wanted to say that. I'll give a report on RCRC. Wednesday, we had the RCRC meeting and right during the meeting, there was that, the cash fire took place, but before that, we were able to, the Golden State, the Golden State Connect Authority, JPA, was implemented to advance rural broadband, rural broadband development. And so it's going to be governed by elected supervisors from rural counties, of course, that choose to join. So the objective is for the Golden State Connect Authority to increase access to reliable, affordable, high-speed broadband for all rural Californians. And last year, early this year, we, Supervisor Sabatier brought forward a, I think it was ordinance or not, a resolution for us to join that, so, or join the whole initiative. And so it's moving forward. Tomorrow, I know agenda review has been moved to the mornings now and I can make this one. So I have a meeting in Upper Lake at 1:00. Let's see, I think it's with the tribe over there. Thursday, we have a Lake County Solid Waste Task Force and that's with Lars. Friday?
On the 2nd.
Is it? Did it get changed?
Yeah, I think it's on the 2nd.
Okay.
I would check in with Lars, but on mine, it says it's on the 2nd.
Okay. I'll check. I'll double check that. Friday, I have, leaving it open, I put out a couple messages to people to meet with me Friday, so I'm hoping I get to meet with these folks about some of the things that were on our agenda. So, just today. So Monday, CAO meeting and back here Tuesday for our meeting, so.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Let's see. Tomorrow, agenda review, I'm going to be joining a drought webinar, discussing what actions are being taken all around the state. I believe CSAC is putting that together. I also will be at a meeting for Highlands Water District. There seems to be some issues that some constituents brought to me about some of their infrastructure and just kind of looking to listen in and provide some, some input, see what they're up to. And then joining the Lake County Fire Protection District meeting that day. I have some CSAC activities all through Thursday. And what is this? There's something on Friday.
Something.
Oh, it's to review some cannabis changes. Let me go back. Looks like we're meeting to look into our investments later on that day as well. And then the Roadmap Task Force reconvening as well. And meeting with the CAO and back with CSAC again on Monday and then coming here on Tuesday to start all over again. I do want to, you know, I can't help but feel bad a little bit. I know I was speaking with Supervisor Simon in our AVA meeting and I had taken, taken a look at the fire and it looked like it was fairly small and was getting contained and boy, was I wrong. And appreciate Supervisor Simon jamming over and doing what he could to assist and help. And I know that while many were unfortunate, I think it's one of those strange, bittersweet moments where we also are lucky that it wasn't worse. And that's due to the teamwork of CAL FIRE by air, our local firefighters, and we did have the mutual aid coming from outside of the county to be boots on the ground, to try to do what they can. But I think that the initial reaction between our local law enforcement, our sheriff, CHP, and Clear Lake PD, saved a whole lot of lives by going door to door, ensuring that people left their homes in time. There was a lot of fear after the fire went through due to the amount of cars that were still in the parking lot, that this might create a situation that we didn't want to see. But I think that the fact that there are zero fatalities right now and that's how fast the fire came, is that people were literally not able to even jump in their car. I know I met some evacuees, a gentleman was wearing his little sister's shoes because he couldn't even find his shoes and they looked very uncomfortable. But that's, that's, that's how fast sometimes the fire will come. And really thankful for the life-saving actions of everyone involved, of our first responders. It's not often talked enough about, but I do want to thank Knottai Unified School District. Goodness gracious, a hotspot started burning right across the way from Lower Lake Elementary School, right next to their pre-K school in Lower Lake. That must have been a very harrowing experience to try to get students in the buses while parents are trying to pick up their kids all at the same time, just creating an absolute traffic mess and hazard. I know that there will be a discussion later tonight. KUSD is doing a town hall with Chief White and with Willie Sepeda, Chief Sepeda, and I believe possibly our sheriff will also be there to discuss the situation that occurred and how we can do better in making sure to keep our students safe and have an understanding of what we're asking parents to do. It's, it's a very nerve-wracking situation. We all want to run in and save our kids, but sometimes we actually make things worse by trying to run into things while others are trying to do their job to save everyone as well. And I just want to hand it out to staff and everyone for the work that they did at KUSD to make sure those kids got out safe into Burns Valley, where then everybody was picking up their kids. That was just a wild situation at that time. So very thankful for where we are at this moment. I'm, I'm feeling like we're really moving forward in the right direction. I know that today was a big day with CAL OES. There's a long haul of cleanup and recovery and I think all of us are willing to roll up our sleeves and make it happen and I appreciate that. Definitely thankful for the collaboration. I know that right next to me is Supervisor Simon, who always opens up his doors. Twin Pie and Casino is constantly offering help and thank you for sheltering those that needed shelter in a time of need. And so definitely happy to have the team that we have and looking forward to working hard to make things better for those that have been impacted. And that is my report for the day and I believe, unless I'm incorrect, that we have accomplished our entire open session. So now we will be going into closed session and we have three items left and I will hold back from saying, yeah, let me move on. 8.1, conference with legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.9 D2 E3, claim of Dano. 8.2, public employee evaluation, Health Services Director. 8.4, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.9 D1, Sabaloni versus County of Lake. And with that, we will go to closed session and again, thank you very much for joining us and have a wonderful day.